We're going to call the meeting to order. If we could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our Golden Apple Awards. Dr. Lons.
Thank you very much, and I will turn it over to Mr. Scaling.
Yes, our first Golden Apple tonight is Sarah Greer. Sarah, if you could come on up. Tonight's first Golden Apple recipient is Sarah Greer, medical support paraprofessional at Wald Lake Elementary. Sarah was nominated by Alyssa LaButt, first grade teacher at Wald Lake L, because Sarah embodies the essence of dedication and support in every aspect of her work. Her interactions with students go beyond just assistance. She fosters genuine connections, offers unwavering support and encouragement to each child she encounters. Her willingness to assist everyone, from students to teachers grappling with classroom challenges, exemplifies her dedication to the school community. Sarah doesn't wait to be asked for help or to do something. She takes the initiative within the classroom, whether it's helping students do their best learning, creating innovative ways for the classroom to run smoothly, or helping to foster positive learning environments. Sarah takes it upon herself to engage in continuous learning endeavors aimed at enhancing her ability to support and connect with students effectively. Sarah's proactive approach demonstrates her innate self-motivation as she consistently seeks out opportunities to improve and excel in her role. Thank you, Sarah, for your dedication and support to the students and staff of Wald Lake L. It's an honor to recognize you this evening.
Hello. So I just want to say thank you so much to Alyssa and everybody at Wald Lake Elementary that's helped me kind of find my way in my role, and I am so honored today to get this and very humbled. And I just want to say thank you so much.
It's now my pleasure to turn it over to Mrs. Kowansky.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Our last but not least Golden Apple Award winner is Brian Blackney from Wald Lake Western High School. Come on up, Brian. There we go. It's exciting, almost as exciting as a Lions and Packers matchup at eight o'clock tonight. So, all right. Tonight's Golden Apple Award recipient in front of you is Brian Blackney, social studies teacher at Wald Lake Western. Brian was nominated by Teri Shumansky, Wald Lake Western parent, because Brian is not only knowledgeable about his subject matter, but he's also able to engage and inspire students, and I've witnessed this firsthand in his classroom. At the high school level, where students are often disengaged and unmotivated, a history teacher who can make the past come alive is a true asset. Brian is not your typical history teacher. His passion for history is evident in every lesson that he teaches, and his enthusiasm is contagious. He has a unique way of making even the most mundane historical facts come alive. He uses interactive activities, multiple presentation formats, and real-world examples to engage his students. From time to time, he can even be found wearing a pirate costume, talking like a pirate, and even using the harmonica to help history come alive for students. Brian will let you perform for us later outside in the front. He encourages critical thinking and analysis, challenging his students to think beyond the textbook, and truly engages students, respecting them for their opinions. Brian's dedication to his students goes well beyond the classroom. He helps students with their assignments, encourages them when they're having a rough day, offers guidance and support. Brian takes the time to get to know each student individually, understanding their strengths, their weaknesses, their interests, and instructs them according to their needs. Patience and empathy are two additional qualities Brian possesses. He remains calm and offers an empathetic ear during a student's heightened level of emotions. He shows kindness towards his students, helping them build lasting connections with him and earning their trust. The students feel comfortable being themselves, encouraging them to be more active and participate in class. Brian's a great role model for his students. He demonstrates the importance, the important value, pardon me, of hard work, dedication, and resilience. He has a positive way of influencing students' attitudes and beliefs. Brian's not only a teacher, but a mentor, a role model, and a supporter. Brian, thank you. Thank you for your dedication, for your passion, for your commitment to the students, and we will miss you when you retire in January. We wish you the best of luck on your new adventure, and please come visit us. It is our honor to recognize you tonight.
Well, I can say, I'll say, I can say thank you, absolutely. Wise man once said that you don't do anything on your own. You often stand on the shoulders of giants. And I thank you for the support of the board. I thank you for the support of great administrators like Mr. Hamka and great parents like the Shumanskis and, you know, it does take a village, and I'm very thankful for my ability to serve this community for the years that I have. And I just love the people here, and I will miss all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Before we move on, I'm just going to welcome our two new board members to the table. I will do it formally in board commentary, but welcome Ms. West and Mr. Smith. And we're going to move on to our textbook recommendation. Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Kowansky.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. The current anatomy and physiology textbook and materials are now over 25 years old, and the textbook no longer aligns with current science practices and standards. So based on the results of the examination of available products, it is the committee's recommendation to adopt Essentials of Human Anatomy and Physiology, Pearson 2022, which includes a textbook and online support. The cost will not exceed $30,000 and includes student editions, all teacher support materials, online access technology, and shipping. The process has been endorsed by administration, and a motion for approval of the textbook adoption will be presented at the January 9, 2025, meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Bond update. Dr. Lons.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Kevin Donnelly. He's from Plant, Ran, Real Point. As community may remember, at the beginning of the school year, we engaged with Plant, Ran, Real Point as an owner's rep. I've enjoyed working with them very much so far. They've been an incredible asset to not only myself, but to the district. Periodically throughout the school year, Ms. Donnelly or someone from his team will be here to update the community about our bonds and where we are in the construction process and spending of the bonds. He also had an opportunity to meet previously with the board subcommittee, and that's part of the commitment that we made as we entered into our agreement. So, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Happy to be here tonight, and thank you for putting your confidence in Plant, Ran, Real Point. This is my first opportunity to present to the board, looking forward to many future updates and presentations. Tonight I'd like to cover just some introductions of our team and who's going to be involved with the program, a high-level overview of our scope of services and what we're engaged to perform related to the 19 and 24 bond program, a 90-day action plan. We were hired, I think, late August, early September, so we've been roughly working behind the scenes now for 90 days. An update on professional services related to the bond, then a bond update for the projects that we wrapped up last summer and future projects to come in 2025, leaving a few minutes for any questions that the board may have. I will be your day-to-day point person related to the bond program. I think many of you know Mr. Wills, who will be presenting later tonight. He's done a lot of the upfront work closely with the district. Paul will be the partner in charge. I have a lot of support behind the scenes. We do have some other folks that will be day-to-day working alongside myself. Lisa Pitt, who hopefully you'll get a chance to meet here in one of the upcoming meetings. And we have a robust staff behind the scenes handling a lot of the finances for the bond, the project cost accounting, and then any other needs throughout the bond program. We have folks that'll be coming in and out to help support our group. Just a high-level overview of our services. Coming in with the 19 program, active, we're kind of serving many roles right now, wrapping up the 19 program and kicking off the 24 program. Right off the get-go, one of my challenges and one of my tasks was to validate all the details of what we're going to be doing in the 24 program. So, program validation and team assembly are really two key components that we're working on right now related to the 24 program. And then as we're wrapping up the 19 program, we're actively involved in design oversight, construction oversight, and closeout of active projects. And that same kind of sequence of our role at a high level will be the same for 2024. One of the things that we're going to be implementing with the 24 bond program that I don't believe the district has had the luxury to do in the past is we're going to have a, what a PMIS system stands for, is a Project Management Integration System. We use a platform called E-Builder that we're currently using in 35 districts to help them manage their programs. And what E-Builder is, it's a real-time system that we predominantly use for cost control and compliance management related to the bond. So, working closely with Julie and her team, they'll have real-time information, updated information related to budgets, finance, billings, change orders, everything related to the bond program will be at our fingertips. And the project team down the line, AUC Construction, TMP, they'll also have accessibility to that. So, all the players are really working from the same menu. It also provides a lot of checks and balances, and we can provide any type of customized reports for Julie and her team as we move forward. So, we feel that this is going to be a huge asset to the bond program moving forward. One of the things that we want to pride ourselves on moving forward is just communicating, not only to day-to-day stakeholders, but to the overall community and the constituents who have put their trust in not only our organization, but the entire project team. We're going to be coming to the board at least three or four times a year, giving updates similar to what we're doing tonight. We'll be working behind the scenes with Dr. Lons and his team, giving monthly updates. We'll be doing quarterly, if not even more frequent, financial reconciliations on where we stand with the bond finances to make sure that everybody is talking from the same page related to the money. And then we'll provide quarterly dashboards as well, not only as part of our presentations moving forward, but directly to the Finance and Operations Group. We will work closely with Communications to make sure that the community, through the whole course of the bond program, is up to date, and they're getting real information and updates not only on what we're doing, but what's yet to come. So, we want to make sure that we're reaching out to the community and utilizing the website to communicate. So, what has Plant, Ran, Real Point been working on the last 90 days? Well, at least from my perspective, just getting my arms around what we're doing, being new to the program, a lot of documents to review, a lot of information to compile, so I've been digesting a lot of that over the last 90 days, getting up to speed, developing our project management plan for the 24 program. We've been having, you know, I just, I kind of came in feet to the fire immediately, but we've been having regular team meetings with Dr. Lons on a biweekly basis and Administration, and then the extended project team on a biweekly basis as well with AUC and TMP. Working on communications plans, part of what we're doing is communicating tonight. So, what is our communication plan moving forward, and how frequent, and what types of mediums are we going to use to communicate? And just figuring, getting myself acclimated to all the district buildings. On the finance and accounting side, I mentioned E-Builder earlier. That is going to be the platform that we're going to utilize for the 24 program, so getting budgets entered, getting governance developed, getting procedures and workflows developed on who's doing what. We'll talk a little bit further, but identifying any Design Prime opportunities and what Design Prime is. It's an owner-direct approach for procurement, which we can talk a little bit about here in a moment. And setting up the cash flow for the four-series bond that's, we already sold series one, but just setting up the overall cash flow for the program. Schedule and budget, develop, refine, and coordinate the 24 program with the team. We're going to be looking at that a little further in the presentation, but that schedule will be pretty fluid. We might make some modifications along the way, but we have a pretty good game plan moving forward. Develop and update the budgets related to the 24 program as well, and set up the E-Builder budgets in the systems. Professional services, outside of Plant, Ran, Real Point, there's obviously an extended team that is required to execute the bond. We've been working behind the scenes with District Legal and Administration, and you'll be seeing it a little bit later in tonight's agenda, to get the architect onboard for the 24 program. We will be bringing forward in January a recommendation for construction management services. And then in addition to that, we've identified roughly a half a dozen other professional services that will be needed in that, you know, geotech, survey, environmental, security consultant, and testing for the construction work. So, we are working right now on RFPs that will be bringing recommendations forward in the coming months. One of the things that we feel that we're going to be able to provide and show to the district is a return on the investment in Plant, Ran, Real Point. There's a lot of different ways we feel that we can provide value. One of them is cost escalation avoidance. We all know how the market has been and how the economy has gone the last four years. If we're able collectively with the team, just by one example, to cut off six months to a year of the bond program, which isn't unheard of, that could mitigate an entire years of escalation, an entire year of fees from other consultants. So, there's some real potential in savings there. Design approach, I did mention the term Design Prime, and what that essentially means is if there is work in the bond program that is not necessarily very complex, to give you an example, roofing projects, parking lot projects, we don't need to go through all the layers of consultants, which have fees, to execute the work. We can go directly to, by example, a roofing designer, a civil engineer, and cut the layer of the main architect out, and then go right to the contractor versus the CM. That could potentially save 6% to 8%, maybe sometimes 10%. And if there's $10 million to $20 million in the program, that adds to some real savings in that procurement approach. So, we're working closely with the team behind the scenes to identify what projects might be eligible for that and good candidates. Procurement approach, and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a moment, but just negotiating with the other consultants fair and reasonable market conditions. We'll provide an example here in a moment. We feel pretty, we feel pretty good about where we arrived with TMP and the architect, just holding the team accountable to the current market conditions, the appropriate terms and conditions, and we'll see here in a moment that's realized some real savings. And just quality review, my background, I've been in construction management and program management close to 30 years, a lot of which was on the construction management side. So, I do have a pretty good background in construction, but just being that extra set of eyes and ears with the district and at the table with the extended team will provide value. Obviously, we're going to be part of all the design oversight, just day-to-day with construction, and just working closely with the team with another extension of the district. Again, we're going to be bringing forward a recommendation of Dr. Lons', is here later tonight. We have gone through and negotiated the terms with TMP on their contract. We're bringing a recommendation forward tonight contingent upon legal review, but we're going to be generating the contract probably just before and after the holiday. We arrived at a fixed number to start out with at $11.7 million. The budget that's in the PQ application is $15.4. So, right off the get-go, we've realized the savings of roughly $3.6 for that particular professional service. I had mentioned earlier that we are negotiating similar terms and conditions with the construction manager that we'll bring forward here in January. And then there'll be other required professional services, as I had mentioned, that we'll be bringing forward probably February, March, April timeframe, and that's with geotech, survey, building commissioning, potentially a security consultant, testing, and then any direct design services that we might apply to Design Prime work. So, the pretty pictures, the exciting things, and the real fruit of everyone's labor is the actual work that gets done. Some of the projects that have been completed over the past year, we did team buildings at all of the high schools. This one is Wald Lake Central. Very similar, if not identical, building over at Wald Lake Northern. And again, this presentation will go on the website for the community to look at as Little different configuration as far as location, but identical building over at Wald Lake Western for the team building. Various renovations over at Wald Lake Central. Improvements at the Outdoor Education Center, which have been completed. Wald Lake Western addition and renovations. And that with the highlights from last summer. Now, what do we have coming up for 2025? And you'll see a few of those recommendations tonight. We are going to be, and this is to wrap up the 19 program, we have roughly $30 million left to expend on the 19 program, and that'll be contained in the projects that I have listed here. Wald Lake Northern improvements in remodeling. We're going to be doing improvements to the Wald Lake Northern baseball and softball, and that'll be funded through the sinking funds, turf fields, new fencing, improvements that we can do within budget, maintenance and transportation improvements, there'll be mechanical upgrades over at Wald Lake Central. Another recommendation being brought forward tonight is for district-wide security projects. And what I mean by that is we're going to be putting security film at all the vestibules for the majority of the buildings. And then elementary gymnasium acoustic improvements at Keith, Loon Lake, Oakley Park, and potentially So, rolling into the 24 bond program, it's going to be split into four series. We've already sold series one this past spring, but real high level, and this will continue to be refined as we move forward. But the three main projects under series one are Wald Lake Northern, Geisler being repurposed, and then the operations building. Series two will be during years two and three, and that'll be the new Wicksm Elementary, continuation of work over at Geisler and Wald Lake Northern. Series three is where we're going to have some money to buy some buses as well, and then we'll be doing improvements over at Western, Twin Sun, Commerce Elementary, and Glengarry. Most of the elementaries will be contained in years three and four, and that's through series three. The next page is a continuation of that, and that's the remainder of the elementary buildings, along with additional work over at the operations at OEC and the ESC building. Series four projects, which will be contained in years four through six, will include Wald Lake Central, the ECC, the middle school buildings, and Dublin Elementary. A lot to digest here, but this, I think, will be helpful to the public as they look at the website, look at this a little bit further, just what are we doing at each building? This is the high-level summary per building of what the scope is going to be, not to say that might change a bit, but if you're interested in what's going to happen in each building, these next three slides, take a look at that when it hits the website. All the elementaries were on page one, the middle schools and high schools contained here, and then all the miscellaneous buildings in the district, the scope of work that's going to be performed. So, I try to keep it as brief and as informative as I can. Obviously, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer those, but I'm looking forward to collaborating with the board as we move forward. Thank you.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casagrande.
A couple of things. So, we had an agenda item where we approved some pool work because of code. Is this, I assume from what we just heard here, that Western and Central pools are completed, that code works completed? Okay. Could I have an update on where we are with that?
Yeah, Central's completed and open. Western, the new gutter system has gone to the state. The state has signed off on it. It's gone to the fabricator. It takes between six and eight months, six and eight weeks to fabricate. Best-case scenario, we're still looking at a March slash April availability. Hopefully, we can get it done sooner, but that right now is the timeline, because once, they're actually removing almost three and a half feet of tile from the top down, and then about two and a half feet from what is the current edge back to put this in and then rebuild all of that. So, but Central and Northern are operational right now.
Okay. Perfect. And then I just have a high-level question. I'm not even, I don't think the board has seen any reports that have come out of the system that you're talking about. So, I'm kind of wondering if, I don't know if our committee has seen it yet or not, so I'm just kind of asking out of kind of ignorance of that. You mentioned dashboards. Are they, can we slice them by building? The board would probably like to see, what are you going to show us, and kind of get a feel and flavor for that.
So, we talked in the subcommittee that we would have the subcommittee take a review of that first. The reason why it's not available right now is we're finishing up to 2019, and to backfill that information would not be valuable use of our time and energy, and so we're building into the 24 now. And so, I would not anticipate that level of data being available until perhaps August or September, just because that's when we start to really get into the 24 projects. There's a couple small 24 projects that we're doing in BidPAC 8 that we'll talk about later. The Northern roof, that's half 2019, half 2024. So, they're tracking the 2024 stuff right now, but it really wouldn't be much of a dashboard at this point. I mean, it sounds silly, but it's only a couple million dollars. I mean, it's a lot of money to me, but in a bond project, it's not going to show much at this time.
No, I understand. I understand. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Being part of the bond subcommittee, I had the opportunity to review this presentation earlier, and I just want to say I appreciate that you guys took some feedback that we had in that meeting and made some changes. One of the things that I hope that the community very much appreciates is going to be the transparency throughout the process that we are hoping to make sure continues to happen, you know, with the dashboard, with knowing what's going on, with trying to make it very clear. You know, transparency has been something that's been a big deal the last couple of years, and so one thing that I hope is if the community at any point feels that that transparency isn't there, there's questions, like please let us know, because the committee and, you know, Plant, Ran, the administration, I feel is very because the, the committee and, you know, Plant Moran, the administration, I feel is very responsive to that feedback. And so, we want to make sure that, you know, the community that supported this bond also feels that we are supporting you back with the information that you need to feel comfortable with the decisions that we're making and that you are paying for. So, I just want to thank you guys for the work that you're doing and look forward to all the things that are going to happen.
Mr. Seigler.
Echoing on what Mrs. Levin said and, and talking with Mrs. Crafton, a lot of this information will be also available on the district website as, as we're moving along. When you talk about merging projects and cost savings, you know, it's a lot of money in the end when we put it all together, a great deal of savings. And I do want to thank everybody involved, because when, when we had our meeting, we, the subcommittee had some very specific thoughts or recommendations and suggestions, and they were very well-received. You know, we have been very fortunate to have the community support us as we are doing this in past bond, bond and millage efforts. And I look forward to the end results, because I think they will be spectacular. And as Mrs. Levin has said, you know, maybe we can dress down the buildings and look them a little bit more like school buildings. I'm sure that will, if it is, if it's not a cost savings, you will tell us that it's better off, we're doing it this way, and this is how you're going to save money versus going with straight cement walls, but I appreciate it.
Mrs. Fernandez.
I had two kind of high-level questions. I wanted to ask, with the E-Builder system that you're using to track the bond funds, will you also be tracking the sinking funds? I noticed at least one of the projects was a sinking fund, sinking fund project, and so, will that tracking also happen through E-Builder?
Yeah, any, any sinking fund projects that are, that are in play with the, with the projects we're looking at, regardless of funding source, we'll be tracking that as well.
Only the ones that are in play with the bonds?
We're not, there's probably a lot of district-direct initiatives that are, that are being funded through the sinking fund. We will not be tracking those. But any projects that are part of the 24 program that have, have sinking fund funding, we will be tracking. But that's not to say we can't have that conversation with Julie and see how we can help.
Okay, I was going to say, oh, snap, like, it sounds like that could be helpful. And my second question was just, I know you were brought in around late August, and we had a bus purchase, significant-sized bus purchase that happened, I believe, in October. Did you have any involvement or review or insights and into that?
I didn't have any involvement, unfortunately, so I wish I could help.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you for that wonderful report, and it's good to see the transparencies on there and to see the snapshot. I think it's going to be wonderful for I myself as a parent, as a taxpayer, and everything, to see actually what projects are there. My, my main question I have is just because it's in my, my purview of, I work for government. When I see the cost savings, that's wonderful, the 3.6. Are there contingencies built in in case there's any changes, anything like that? Is there 10%, 20%? I didn't see that in the motion, so I just want to see if there's contingencies built into that, that it's 11 million. Does that include 10%, 15% in case there's any?
Yeah, we, we carry, there's a lot of different contingencies that are carried right now, but certainly for, until we get all the contracts locked in for professional services, there's a budget with contingency setup for all the construction projects when they're early in conceptual design. There's typically a 15 to 20%. That'll get reduced as we get smarter and more definitive information with design. And then we're going to recommend, as we move forward with the bond program, two contingency funds, kind of holistically. There'll be construction contingency as projects come online of roughly 8 to 10% that the contractor will carry. And then we'll hold back on our side roughly another 10% over the bond that we're calling owner contingency. So, there'll be plenty of contingencies built into the budget.
Ms. Levin.
And just one more, I guess, piece of clarification that was clear in the bond committee, but maybe didn't make it up to this point, is although there might be savings on something like Mr. Smith is talking about, that doesn't mean that something else might not cost more. So, we certainly aren't going to count our chickens before they're hatched. So, that is just an important thing to point out.
Mr. Seigler.
One other thing that we forgot to mention was in regards to change orders of any sizable amounts that we would be notified as a part of the committee of those going through. So, very significant when we have any big changes that we, you know, that we need to know about, and the board needs to know about to inform the community.
Thank you. Mrs. Fernandez.
Notified or notified and approve? Clear as mud.
I can make a quick comment to that. We are, we are working on what we feel is best-practice governance procedures with thresholds of who has authority to approve what and what goes to the board. There will be circumstances, at least per our recommendation, where change orders of a certain threshold will go to the board for approval. But we're working those details out and finalizing the documents right now with administration.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work and for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Your information. Okay, we're moving on to district improvement goals. Dr. Lanz.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. If you give me just a moment to pull up our presentation on data, thank you. Yeah, you're right. Thank you, Shayna. It doesn't sound like it's on. But I'm not sure with the new system, how to get that. Yeah, I mean, I can use my teacher voice, but this one. Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Shayna. I couldn't hear that it wasn't on, and sometimes it's a little low, so we'll go, we'll go solve that. We'll solve that technical issue. Yeah. They're testing it, okay. Which one is the full screen one? This one, is it that one? Yeah. Full screen, there it is. Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Byer.
All right. Testing? Anybody? No? Still no?
Nope, sorry.
Still no? I can use my teacher voice, which is totally, totally fine. Can everybody in the back hear me? Yay!
Thank you, Mrs. Kohansky.
All right, some of you guys want to get home for the game, so I get it. I totally get it. All right, thank you. Thank you to the board for allowing me an opportunity to talk a little bit about data and our data, where we're at right now. So, all of you got this presentation last week, so I, I know that you've had some time to look this over and digest it. One of the things that I wanted to do was to really keep the format really similar to a previous data presentation that I've shared. And last year, when we were talking about data, one of the things that I wanted to make note of was that, and other board members have asked me about this, there's lots of data. Like, I got data, we could sit here for a week and look at lots of different data sets and data points. But the data pieces that we're really monitoring closely are those that are related to our district improvement goals or our MYKIP goals. That's our Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process Goals. We're obligated to have goals that align with our accreditation process, that we use data, multiple data points, to support why we have those goals, and that we closely monitor our progress on them and our implementation of strategies around those. So, what you're going to see tonight is exactly what we looked at last year, but with some new updated data and information that talk about how we're doing with these two goals. I'll also give you a quick balcony overview of our iReady diagnostic from this fall, so that you can kind of get a sense as to what that data is showing in a, in a very aggregate, very overarching way. So, I'm going to give you some really drilled-down data aligned with our goals, and then I'm going to give you some broad balcony data, just so that you can see where are we at with iReady this fall. So, again, that purpose, just what I stated, we really want to look at those drilled-down data points around our district improvement or our MYKIP goals. And what are those MYKIP goals? I was really, really proud this summer when we were doing some teacher feedback and teacher professional development. In working with a group in August, a group of teachers from K-12, they were actually able to say, we know what our goals are. I asked, and they knew. So, what this shows is that we really are aligned with the work that we're doing. And all the way down to the teacher classroom level, our teachers are aware of and know what we're working on, because this is what we work on. This is our professional learning. This is our target. So, we want to enable all students to increase that proficiency in reading and comprehending informational text. That's the majority of texts that we, that we experience as adults. Some of us read for pleasure, but not all of us read fictional text. But informational text comes at us all the time. So, that's why we, we chose as a, as a broad committee, looking at the data, that we wanted to go with informational text. Also, a second goal, which is more of a systems goal, but it supports the academic piece, is Wald Lake having a successfully implemented multi-tiered system of support that supports the needs of all students. So, that's really taking a look at, down to the individual level, what does a student in this, in any particular classroom need at any particular time? All right, so this is a slide that's familiar from last year. And in this slide is really where I kind of gave you that, that comprehensive view of what data did we look at as a team? And we spent months and months looking and digging into a variety of data to come up with those goals. So, again, looking at the, the iReady K through eight, this was spring '23 data. We actually looked back at 2022 data to help us set the goal. But we also looked at M-step and really digging deep into some item analysis, because remember, those M-step, the M-step results come out, and it really looks at grades three through eight. And you look at these big, broad percentages, and you think, well, what does that really mean? So, for us and our team, we really drilled down into an item analysis that's part of the presentation. We'll talk about that. And then you'll see our little Wald Lake logo, because we also looked at grades. We looked at benchmark assessments, unit tests, tests that kids are taking every day in class, and really digging into what are we asking kids to, to do on a day-to-day kind of basis, right here in our classrooms. So, it's really looking at big state-level data, our benchmark assessment system data, down to the classroom level and individual grades. So, this is just a repeat slide from last winter, but this is our spring 2024 iReady diagnostic for K-8. So, this was the end of the year. This was May-June, kids were taking this final diagnostic. We are making progress. We are seeing those green bands expanding in the area of vocabulary and informational text comprehension. So, we're making gains. It's kind of hard to tell when you look at these big, broad bar graphs, but we're going to take a look at some numbers to see how we're making some gains in, in those two areas. I gave you this whole snapshot, because sometimes we ask about other elements of literacy and progress, and I wanted you to be able to see where we're at also with regard to phonological awareness, which is the hearing and manipulated hearing of sounds and spoken sounds, down to phonics, which is mapping the sounds onto the reading of text or the writing of text, but in this case, it measures the reading of text. Those high-frequency words, so familiarity with those. Then we get down into the vocabulary and the comprehension. So, so that you can see comparatively, yeah, we have work to do in all of these areas, but the biggest area of work to do is around vocabulary and comprehension. So, let's take a look at vocabulary. You're going to see three data sets. The first one that you're going to see is our entire district K through eight on vocabulary. On the left side, you see where we started in October of 2022, looking at how our students were in this area of vocabulary, and then taking a look at where did we end the year in June. These are, these are all of our students who take iReady K-8. So, you can see we're making progress. We're closing gaps. This next slide looks exactly the same, except at the top in yellow, it says elementary. So, this is K-5. We felt it important to look at it by level as well. So, you can see in K-5, our teachers are really focusing on strategies to improve vocabulary. And so, this is, this is showing some nice gains. Do we still have work to do? Absolutely. We still have students below grade level, but we're starting to close those gaps for, for a lot of our students. Here's middle school, so this is six through eight. Again, making progress, a little bit less progress in vocabulary at the middle school, then spreads out across specific content areas. And so, we have content area kind of specialists, if you will. You know, you have a science teacher that teaches science all day long. K-8, K-5, you've got teachers that are teaching all subjects in one classroom. So, it's a little more compartmentalized in middle school, but still focusing on disciplinary literacy strategies around vocabulary has been the focus of our professional learning. We're making some gains and some progress. So, how does that translate into informational text? So, again, the same types of data sets, first looking at district K through eight from our starting point until June. So, again, as a, as an aggregate look, we're really making some gains, still work to do, like I said. Elementary, K-5, again, making nice gains, but still work to do. And then, of course, middle school. Again, like we noted with vocabulary, still gains, maybe not quite as pronounced as we're seeing with some of our elementary students, but we're still making progress in the area of informational text comprehension. So, woo, and I'm on. Wow! All right, that saves, saves my voice, so I can cheer for the Lions later when I get home. Okay, all right. So, so as you can see, we're making some nice gains. One might say, well, shouldn't we be making more significant gains? Like, you're, you're throwing all in at this. And really, we are, we are all in around these two areas of, of goal work with our teachers. One of the things I can tell you is that from experience of moving through numerous, numerous cycles of district improvement in other large districts, typical district improvement cycles last about five years, and this is just year two for us. So, I want you to think about, we used 2022, 23 data to formulate the goals, 23, 24 in implementing. And so, we've got, we've got just a few years in on this. So, we've got a little bit of time to go as we're watching these gains. So, as I mentioned at the first slide, we use a variety of data points. I apologize to the audience, this is very, very tiny, but board members, I know you have a, a copy of this, so you can enlarge it on your screens, you can do what you need to with it. But we took a look in that initial 20, fall of '22, fall into winter of '22, kind of looking and digging deeply into data, that we looked at our 2021 end-of-year state assessment, and we were showing for informational text and vocabulary around 25 items on those M-step state tests in third grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade, that were showing up as relative areas of weakness. That meant that we didn't even have 25% of the aggregate of students passing those items. So, if it was highlighted in red and yes, that meant that that was a relative area of weakness when it came to informational text and vocab. And you'll notice it says ELA, so our English Language Arts exam, as well as math. And one might say, well, how does math factor into informational text comprehension? Anybody a fan of story problems? Remember when we were young, right? And you think, I can do the math, I can't figure out the story problem. So, really, that's what we are trying to focus on. I don't mean to make it, make it trite or simplistic, but really, the language that's embedded in informational text in math has a really specific genre to it, and we're really helping our kids to get better at understanding informational text outside of an ELA or an English class. So, you can see third, sixth, and seventh grade, as we took a look at those items, we made a lot of gains within closing gaps on the M-steps test. We went from 25 areas of weakness to seven. Now, I caution you with that big jump, because it might be like, oh, my gosh, you solved the issue. Well, we might have gotten kids a little over that threshold of, of that 25%, where we found a relative area of weakness for kids. But what we noticed is that in 2024, we only have six areas of weakness. But if you look at the graphs, some areas that last year moved off the, the critical list kind of bumped back on. So, that leads us to believe in learning services that those are. that those are areas that aren't really solid yet. So as it says, seven areas of weakness, you know, we make this huge jump, like, woo-hoo. And yes, we're excited about it, but we're really watching, because I think some of these areas are tentative progress. And we need to make sure that we've really got that solid for some of our students. And a couple of those areas crop up in math. So where's that connection, right? Where's that connection to the work we're doing in Learning Services? If you remember, we really are taking our time in rolling out that new middle school math program. And we're starting this year with sixth grade. Next year, it will roll up to seventh, and then the following year, roll up to eighth. We really are addressing these weakness areas in really looking at what units and what lessons in math address these, and really tightening that up. So our math team and our math department are really well aware of it. We're cautiously optimistic in terms of this type of progress we're making. But we know that some of it's tentative, and we're really watching that carefully so that we can support our teachers in delivering the instruction and our learners in the areas where they might be struggling. All right, so I'm going to move away from the district improvement goals and the work that we're doing there, and really just give you that balcony overview of how's it going this fall with students incoming for the new year? And how are they doing on their reading and math diagnostics? So again, I'm going to start with the iReady placement level descriptors, because this is important in terms of understanding what those color coding systems mean, especially when it comes to entering into the grade level for this year. So if I'm a third grader, and I took my assessment the second week of school, which a lot of our students did, you know, right off the bat, we're getting kids to do their diagnostic. If I'm a third grader, I'm being assessed on all the third-grade standards. But I just started third grade, so I haven't yet had exposure to all of it yet. So I want to caution you, when you look at that yellow, one grade below, doesn't necessarily mean that a student is at risk, yet. So if you look at this descriptor, it says that students who might place yellow at their beginning-of-year diagnostic are performing consistent with students who have just begun that academic year. So just cautiously think about that yellow. And it basically, Curriculum Associates and their research share that if the students are still placing there in that mid-year diagnostic, which is January, February, and certainly by end-of-year diagnostic, then those are students we need to really consider for additional intervention. And that's where we look at students who fall into those categories as being recommended for some of our summer school programs, tutoring opportunities, other interventions that take place with the teacher in the classroom or with our intervention specialists. So just know that that's kind of how we watch, and we use that. If students at the beginning of the year are early on grade level, or mid or above, that means that these are students coming into third grade, let's say, who are well beyond where, like, they've learned their third-grade standards in third grade. So those are students we need to be looking at for enrichment, for extra challenge, for other types of learning opportunities to help them grow. And if students are two to three grade levels behind starting that grade, that's definitely a more intensive approach that we want to take. And we want to make sure those students are definitely being provided supports with our MTSS process. So. So how do we compare to our benchmarks? This first graph you're seeing is reading. So our iReady diagnostic was given, like I said, right when kids started in on school. You can see, I'll go from left to right. The national norm that Curriculum Associates is using is based on the Fall 2022-23 National Data Set. In the middle, where it says national year-to-date, those are the national fall scores in reading, K through eight, by the way. Then you'll see Michigan districts that utilize iReady, K to eight. You can see their fall diagnostic. And then you can see our district score is the bar graph that's right there on the right, next to the key. So as you can see, based on this, we continue to outperform national norms from a few years ago. We continue to outperform our national data from this fall, as well as outperforming our Michigan counterparts, who are also using iReady as their diagnostic in reading. And remember, that yellow doesn't necessarily mean everybody's way below. There are students in that yellow range that are right on target where they need to be at this point in the year. Of course, when we measure that in mid-year and end-of-year is where we want to really be watching students and their progress. And this, same exact graph in math. So you can take a look at where Wald Lake is performing if you look at that far-right vertical bar graph there. And you can take a look, again, those national norms from 2022-23, the national current data, and then our Michigan counterparts. So what are we doing about it, right? And this, again, is a familiar slide from last year, but with some enhancements that I've added. So what we continue to do as part of that five-year broad improvement plan is the systems alignment piece. We continue to work on our MTSS processes. One might think, well, you develop a process, you show everybody what to do in monitoring student data, and you let them do it. We have 12 elementaries, we have four middle schools, we have three high schools. And the implementation of those processes, we are continually refining, checking in, and monitoring. And that's the work that my team and I continue to do with the principals and do with their teams at their buildings. So aligning that system across our district is of utmost importance. And it's not a one-and-done, it's continually inspecting what you expect. And that's a term that I like to use sometimes, is inspect what you expect. So we are keeping a close eye on that and continuing to work together. Our focused professional development. So our professional development half-days, those times when our teachers come together, aren't just times for them to do whatever. Those are really focused professional learning opportunities, where we're really keying in on strategies to teach vocabulary, strategies to teach comprehension through small-group instruction models. And we're also focusing on that MTSS process of digging deeply into the student data, down to the individual student level, and helping our classroom teachers know how to plan best for instruction next. Those close data reviews, as I said, that's part of our ongoing work with K-8. And our buildings are doing a great job. Every building has data teams, we have instructional specialists and coaches that help look and dissect that data with our teachers and talk about action plans for students so that we can continue to close those gaps in those areas of need. Continuous monitoring. Like I said, we're looking at individual student growth through these processes. The instructional work that we're doing, again, the PDs focus on techniques for small-group work. The curriculum work that we're doing, highlighting that middle school math. And we continue to focus on using our district and board-approved resources for helping our teachers learn how to use those different tools effectively with kids. Other additional steps, that partner-school coaching model. So having those high-quality, highly-skilled facilitators in, coaching right in classrooms alongside our teachers and helping our students. They're also coaching and helping our coaches or our instructional specialists at every building know how to support the teachers. So they come in, they coach, they do that very intensive work, and then they leave with homework, if you will. Like, when I come back, here are some things that, you know, I want you to be working on. And our fantastic instructional specialists at the building level continue to carry that work, and along with the principals, to work with our staff. Those grade-level professional developments that are taking place, I'm going to have a little bit during admin commentary, Dr. Lanz and board members, to share about some fabulous work that took place at Keith yesterday. And then we also are, my team and I are facilitating new teacher and new principal sessions. We have a host of new administrators in the district. And anytime you have that type of changeover, you want to make sure that we're all rowing the boat in the same direction, and everybody scaled up and have those same tools to help and support the system as a whole. And we have a lot of new teachers, which is exciting. But it's also helping them know how to use those tools and to scale up those skills, too. And then we have training for our coaches. As I mentioned, those instructional specialists continue to receive coaching supports through Oakland Schools. They continue to receive that through our coaching network that we work with at the state level. And it's just, it's very exciting to see everything very aligned. So that's what I have to share. That's my final slide. I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments or thoughts that you have at this time.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Thank you, Mrs. Casa Grande.
Dr. Lanz, I don't know what this would look like. I would think it would be in your purview to kind of figure out. What my, one takeaway I took, as Mrs. Kohansky was talking about those areas that are tentative progress, it might be nice. I don't know what it looks like or how it comes to us, your decision. But it might be nice to understand, before we get the next presentation, what we're doing on those areas of tentative progress. So I would leave that to you, though, how to do it. Thank you.
Mrs. Levin.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Kohansky, for the presentation. I've got two questions, kind of higher-level questions. In your professional opinion, how did we get to the point where vocabulary and informational text were the lower pieces of our work?
Yeah, thank you for that, that's a great question. I think that one of the things that I can speak to is what research tells us about why some of those areas might be weaker. We know that students who maybe speak a different language at home, as their home language, come to us with a different set of vocabulary skills, especially around English. We know that students, research shows us that students who are English learners may take five to 10 years to really acquire an academic vocabulary. They may become very conversational speakers in a conversational way. But when it comes to academic vocab, that becomes a much more difficult task to help students with. We know our students that speak a different language at home, that those numbers have increased over the years. So we know that that's one reason why students may struggle in that particular area. I also know that research shows that students from economically disadvantaged households may talk less at home, they may have less experiences outside of the home. They may be a little further from where some of our more, how shall I say, resourced families have opportunities to give their kids. So students who come to us, and almost you can parallel some of these data charts if you look at economically disadvantaged population. You can look at it, and it almost overlays in the exact same way that our data shows with vocabulary and comprehension. So those are two areas, there could be a host of other areas. Students with speech and language difficulties or delays may also struggle in these types of areas, too. So helping our teachers have skills and strategies for helping not only English language learners, but students who may be coming to us with a variety of needs. So that's really where we look at, and it's my professional opinion, but it is based on years of research, and that's what we tend to typically see.
So I would assume there's a way to break out those populations from the data. So if we were to look at the kids that don't fit in those boxes, the English language learners, socio-economically disadvantaged, special-needs population, just the average, everyday learner, is the data the same?
So the data is different? While that's not something that I've felt super comfortable sharing out in public, I would be happy to share that with the board at a separate time. I don't want to call anyone out for the data, I don't want to call anybody, you know, I don't want to paint a negative picture or any of our subgroups or populations in any negative way. But I'm happy to share that data with you separately.
And I totally understand, just alternatively, I want to paint a positive picture for when it is working.
Absolutely.
You know, and the data may not be as grim as it might look sometimes. If we are, you know, if the populations are different, I think it's healthy to look at when it is working well, because I think it can look good and be more positive.
Absolutely.
My second comment was on the chart, you know, we went from 25 weaknesses to maybe seven or 10, to maybe six. That's good, that we're making progress. What I'm wondering is, what are the stretch goals that are not weaknesses? But what are the things that we're looking at to maybe look at more advanced? You know, this is where we're doing really well, maybe these are our advanced students, so we can start looking at more advanced work instead of the catch-up work. It's what are we doing to push the top? So I'm wondering, and I don't expect you to answer this right now, but something I'd be curious is, what's the next step? You know, let's say we get that six down to, you know, two and one, and then we have a party. What's the other side of that? So I'm very curious to know, is there a current focus on the advanced piece of things? And what does that look like?
Yeah, thank you, I can speak to that a little bit when it comes to K-5. So that small-group instruction model that we talked about, it's not just for our students who are below, you know, one, two, three grade levels below. That small-group instruction model is also for our higher-achieving students. So that expectation, and when we coach and work with our teachers, is to look at all of their data. Yes, we want them to focus, as Mrs. Casa Grande said, what are those actionable steps that we're taking when we're looking at M-Step trends, or we're looking at that data on an individual student basis? Yes, we want teachers to identify and use that data and say, okay, I know that this might be a group I've got to meet with every day, or four out of the five days. But where are those enriching groups, right? Where are those groups that are already coming in high? They're already scoring successfully on M-Step. They're already, you know, doing well and acing their benchmark and their unit assessments and their class tests. Well, those teachers are also in small group, taking a look at what can I do to enrich? So they might be reading books at higher levels, they might be doing book club activities, passion projects. Those are those kinds of things that we offer to those advanced learners to keep them growing. And while it's not part of this data presentation, I'm going to write myself a note to talk and share some data with you about the stretch growth numbers for students that fall in that early on and on and above. I'd love to share with you the stretch growth, because I don't want us to think that we are neglecting any of our learners. Actually, the students, and teaser, they're growing and they're stretching really well, above and beyond just an annual typical growth. But I'll be happy to share those numbers with you, I think that would be encouraging for you to see.
Sure, and that's good to hear. And then, you know, if they are growing, you know, faster, great. Then what does the future look like for those kids as well?
Yeah, you bet, thank you, I'll get that for you.
Mrs. West?
Thank you, Mrs. Kohansky. So while I appreciate that, like, we are growing and improving, the information you sent to us, I noticed was, in 2019, we are significantly higher than when we were in '21-'22. And I'm thinking part of that might be due to the online learning and COVID. So I'm glad to see that we're starting to improve again. But I was wondering if there's any SRR funds available to help these students that are at least two grades or more behind? And if we have enough staffing to even help those kids?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. West, that's a great question. I know that in looking at, and I'd love to talk more with you about which pieces of the 2019 data. Yeah, there, we didn't take a massive hit during COVID, but we definitely slid to a point where, you know, we maintained in a lot of areas. In some areas, we know that those kids came back to us, and it was time to grow again, right? And we're seeing some of that growth back. But the SRR dollars that came to us from COVID are done. Those were spent as of September of '24. So just within the last few months, we spent them down. We spent them on things like tutoring and summer school and all of those types of supports. The state has come in with funding called 23G. We also have some, we continue to use our 31A, which is at-risk funding. So funding that we receive from the state for students that are at risk for a variety of reasons. And so we really are very thoughtful and calculative about taking that money to kind of help to continue to support those same things that we've been using them on. Additional tutoring, I just went through with the principals in October, a tutoring plan using that 23G money. So our principals are like on it, you know, they're developing and designing a variety of types of things, not just before and after school, but some, you know, lunchtime drop-in help, tutoring to get ready for, you know, an upcoming assessment. So our principals are on it, we have teachers that are helping to staff that right now. We've been really fortunate to be able to have some funding streams that continue to support. And so this 23G state-level grant is kind of doing that job for us. And so we do have funding that's helping to support it and continue to plan along with our administrators and our teachers. So, yeah, thank you.
And then are we able to reach out, are we reaching out to those families that need the extra help then?
So the families that, it looks, it depends on what the programs are like at the individual building levels. So I'm having them design programs around what their needs are. They could be invitation-only. It's not a come-one, come-all. Just because of staffing needs, it might be hard for us to do that. As far as the communication piece and how parents are finding out about these things, I'm happy to circle back to our principals and get more information about how our teachers are reaching out to families, how they might. are reaching out to families, how they might, or our counseling staff might be reaching out to families about opportunities for that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Kohansky. Thank you for answering that, because some of the questions I had were what, who resources are we using to help for intervention? So thank you for also asking those. What is the actual percentage of the threshold? I think you mentioned something about 25% to be in the weakness. What actually is your metric that you're using? Is it truly 25%?
Yeah, for the M-step item analysis that I showed you with the columns of red and green, yes. So if it was coded in red, that meant that we did not yet have 25% or greater passing that with proficiency.
Following up with that is to a personal, and I'm sure many, as well as, how do you pull out the other outliers and help with the students that need other support structures or testing methods? What other diagnostics? Because we do have many kids out there that have test anxiety and other things like that. And how do you pull out that data, if you can, measure that? That, you know, we know that it's testing on one specific day or whatever it's that, but we might hear from the teachers that we're working with, our action plan with our teachers, that our kids are doing amazing with, you know, reading or comprehension, but then on the test, it's not reflecting that. So how do we adhere to that?
How do we tease that out? We were just having a conversation about that in a planning meeting that I was in today, really talking about how oftentimes our instruction, which tends to be paper, pencil, books in hand, sometimes doesn't often translate to the digital world of kids reading, you know, the test is on a computer. The SAT is completely digital right now, right? And that was a move that was made just within the last year. So we've noticed some of that. And one of the things that I'm working on with my team is, how do we carefully provide more opportunities for our students to have access with digital print and learning how to work that? Because some of it, we wonder about, is it the testing environment? Is it the test format? And the other thing, too, that we're looking at and kind of circling back to bringing this full circle and talking about vocabulary, our Michigan M-step has been assessed by the advancing literacy arm of Teachers College to be the second hardest state assessment in the nation based on vocabulary. And I'll give you an example of what I mean by that. So in class, we teach our kids, we're going to learn about main ideas and details. We're going to read about them. We're going to highlight those. We're going to write about main ideas and details. So the teacher talks for months about main idea and details. Did you find the main idea? Look, I found the main idea. But when the student gets to the test, the test language changes oftentimes. And so when the student looks at it on a test, it's the test question prompt, which can't be read or explained by anyone. Student reads it, and it says something along the lines of, and I'm making this up, but hypothesizing, read the following passage. What is the essential focus? And what are three evidence, you know, pieces of evidence that give you reason to know that? And the kid's like, I don't even know what that means, right? Because my teachers called it, you know, they're not even thinking main idea and detail because it's called an essential focus and evidence, right? So what we're trying to do is to help our teachers to understand that the assessment sometimes doesn't often match our good instruction in the classroom, and we want to make that more flexible. So from a vocab standpoint, that can also be. But how do we tease that out? You know, we do a lot of hypothesizing about it. We do have digging deeper assessments. So if we have a question about a student, like, gosh, they didn't do so well on iReady, but they're killing it, killing it in class. I know they're doing well. We have some other, you know, pull aside, do some digging deeper with some other individualized assessments. Our instructional specialists at the elementary can help support a teacher in doing that. And there have been times where it's like, you know, they just didn't take the test well, or they didn't feel well that day. And so providing loads and loads of support to a student who just had a bad day doesn't seem to be, you know, effective. So we do have ways of kind of teasing that out. But yeah, I mean, the test itself and the environment and the vocabulary, all of that can have a huge impact on how we perform. Thank you.
Mr. Siegler.
Mrs. Kohansky. One of the things that you and I had discussed, I think probably six or eight months ago, was the testing and the amount of students that we are testing percentage-wise or who's being excluded. And I think that would be very beneficial for you to reiterate that conversation, if you don't mind, with the audience.
Yeah, absolutely. So thanks, Mr. Siegler. So we are obligated to test 95% of our student population when it comes to the state assessment. And in that state assessment, it's pretty much everybody unless there is a student that has a significant cognitive impairment and might be in a basic program classroom, for which an alternative assessment might be the most appropriate for them and their exceptional needs. So we test basically everyone. If you're a student with a 504 plan, if you're a student with ADHD, if you're a student with, that may have an IEP for accommodations, if you're a student that's learning English as a new language, we have to test all of it. So when you look at that data, it includes basically everybody, except for a very, very small fraction of students that might be taking something alternative. So thank you for that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you.
So here we're going to move on to public commentary. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight and for your interest in addressing the board. This is your opportunity to address the board. The board will listen to your statements, questions, or concerns. We will not have a conversation. If follow-up is necessary, a member of the superintendent's staff or a board member will get back with you. You have three minutes to address the board. Please keep an eye on the timer on the wall, just over here. If you come close to your time, Mr. Siegler will let you know you're coming close and for you to begin to wrap up your comments. We ask that all speakers remain professional and refrain from personal attacks. Thank you. We're going to start with Mara Freund. I apologize, it's not going to be on the wall. So Mr. Siegler will give you a 30-second notice.
That's fine.
Oh, oh, sorry. I misspoke again.
That's okay. Good evening. My name is Mara Freund, and I have a son who attends the Adult Transition Program. Just for the community members that are not familiar with this program, they serve the young adults with special needs between 18 and 26 years old. I'm here today asking for the school board members to support the approval of the repurposing of Geisler Middle School. This matter has a very important meaning to the Adult Transitions Program, considering the students would have a permanent space in that building. The ATP program has been moved multiple times throughout the years. And also, according with the information from the Wall Lake School District website, they were part of the new building remodel project of the Wall Lake Western High School, and somehow that just did not happen. The mission of the ATP is to focus on increasing independence through teaching functional academics, vocational training, daily living skills, and communication skills. In order to achieve that, it is time for the ATP to have their own space, just like any other students in the school district. It is time for the ATP to have appropriate and properly equipped facilities with all the learning spaces, tools, and resources they deserve. The students of the ATP work very hard every single day to maximize their full potential and to have a meaningful life and be active members of our community. Today, I invite you to do your part to support their goals and their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Titus.
Good evening. I'm Christine Titus. I am a proud instructional specialist at Hickory Woods Elementary. I'm a 32-year community member, and all four of my kids went through Wild Lake Schools, K-12. And Mrs. Kohansky, I'll apologize, I promise I did not coordinate my comments with what happened tonight, although it seems like that at times. First of all, tonight, I'd like to thank our Learning Services Team for the design of our last Professional Learning Day on November 19th. The feedback I heard from not only colleagues in my building, but those colleagues I know from across the district, was how relevant this learning was and is. We had professionals learning from professionals, their colleagues, their community. Learning from our colleagues makes it real and practical when we can hear from those that are living in this curricula. I had the pleasure of participating as a facilitator, and I've never had a two-hour session fly by like this did. It's gratifying to see educators come together on behalf of your students. And speaking of students, I get the fact that we have to look at a way of quantifying their learning through data, and that helps with our instructional choices. But what I'd like us all to remember is that behind the data is an individual student and that there are also qualitative ways of collecting information on that child's learning in addition to what we quantify. I think sometimes we get so bogged down in what the data is telling us that we sometimes forget a child's learning isn't always a linear progression, and the learning can take a lot of detours and even setbacks to success. Every child, every day, right? So I'd like to leave you with that thought, as I also wish you all a peaceful and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Rush.
Hello. It was holiday sweater day at my very, very part-time job today, so I just kept the outfit on. I wanted to talk about a couple of things today. There's a lot to talk about. One is, I'm hoping later in the meeting, when we talk about the recommendations, that we're going to hear good discussions about the changes in the feeder patterns. I feel like some of it is a little bit short-sighted and not really thinking through to the future. And did we actually think it through when you're having one-fourth of the students get thrown to the wolves when they go to high school, when they're not with their peers that they've been with for three years? Because those middle school years are really important for students and developing friendships, and it is very difficult, A, to have a friend torn away to go to a different high school or to be that friend that's going away with all new people. And I know we've heard it multiple times, that kids are resilient. Well, we know that they are, but they don't necessarily, there's so many other things that they are resilient for. Why are we segregating these two schools and showing, you know, sending them off where they have to kind of start over? Another thing I wanted to talk about is the openings in the district. So I guess started with, I'm working an amazing, very, very part-time job, and I get bored. So now I sub because it's fabulous, and I, it is. So a couple of things I wanted to say. Number one is, the secretaries are amazing in the district. They are so welcoming. I sub in Wild Lake and in Farmington and in Novi. And I'll tell you one thing, Wild Lake needs to up their subpay because the jobs sit there longer than, you can't get in a Novi job. It's impossible. It really is. So we pay the least amount in the surrounding area, other than, I think, here on Bailey. Every other district pays more for subs. But the secretaries are amazing, and everybody is so helpful, and I'm loving it, whatever district I'm in. But when you look at the job openings in Wild Lake, there's 98 jobs open right now, and 43 of them are para-jobs, which dates back to January of '23. So if you think about that, I don't know how up-to-date it is. But think about it, when you look at, there's 98 openings, there's 38 in Troy and 58 in Rochester. Those are comparable districts. Why do we have so many, and why are we not updating it? Think about when you're selling a house. If the house has been on the market for months and months, what's wrong with the house? There's some of these job openings in Wild Lake that have been on the posting for two years. Some, I don't know if it's up-to-date or not, but I think we need to figure out what we're doing, because when you look at the Oakland County thing and you think, wow, 98 openings in Wild Lake, what's wrong there that there's so many openings? So I think that whether it's up-to-date or not, something needs to be done. But like I said, it's phenomenal to be working in the schools, and the para-professionals should be paid more and the subs, but that's.
Thank you. Tim Sawmiller.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. I'm a cisgender male using pronouns he, him, and his. Last December, this board considered a bid award for the purchase of 10 school buses intended to replace aging buses that will be passing the recommended replacement schedule of 10 years. This was voted down 4 to 3. No good reasons were offered at that time for the no-votes. This brings us to last month, when a bus purchase proposal was again presented to the board and passed 5 to 2. This proposal was essentially the same, except for one additional 77-passenger vehicle. Comments were made such as not having enough time to get board questions answered. Do some buses really need to be replaced that weren't used during pandemic days? And what happens if the district fails to follow its contract to maintain a set vehicle average age? Buses still age when sitting unused, and it was pointed out that they travel the same number of miles, whether full or not. It's a good point that important agenda items should be announced further in advance of a board meeting to allow for board member research. But for this one, you had a year to get questions answered. Did the no-voters stop asking once they voted the proposal down? If I was a board member who helped to vote down something the administration proposed, I would have kept asking questions and working with the administration to help resolve it by the next meeting, instead of just letting it sit. And why would anyone propose breaching a contract just to find out what would happen? Seriously? Compare that with the correct observation that the Reproductive Health Board doesn't need to submit a report every two years following the law. Indeed, all laws must be followed, be they state or federal laws, just as contracts need to be followed. Why the inconsistency? Now, I'm quite familiar with Robert's Rules of Order, but not as familiar with this board's meeting customs. Do you allow for motions to postpone consideration to a specific time? For instance, the next board meeting? If so, that would be a proper way to ask for more time to consider an agenda item instead of just voting no. That method demonstrates good faith intentions to understand an issue more thoroughly, rather than appearing to be obstructionist. Just a suggestion I wanted to pass along. Finally, I would like to thank Peggy Casagrande for her years of service for the Wild Lake School District. I've only been acquainted with you for about two years, but your passion for this district and its students became instantly apparent to me. The district will miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Wise.
Mike Wise, 23-year resident of Commerce Township. I'd like to comment on the repurposing of Geisler Middle School and the new feeder pattern. Thank you to the board, the entire administration, and their very experienced consultants' expertise, diligence, and hard work, and their transparency and the willingness to listen to the community. These are difficult decisions that were necessary for moving forward with the repurposing of Geisler. Everyone is entitled to their opinion. Everyone may be an expert. Everyone thinks their way might be the best. The reality is that it's not possible to make everybody happy all the time. Again, thank you to the board, the administration, and Plant Moran for working through this difficult and complicated process. Thank you for all you do. I would also like to make a comment. Many thanks to Peggy Casagrande for her years and years of service, guidance, and steadfast support of the students, parents, teachers, and administrators of the Wall Lake Consolidated School District. Thank you for your sacrifice and your generous giving of your time to make the Wall Lake School System a better place for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Thompson.
Hello. I'm a Wixom resident attending Loon Lake Elementary, and we purchased our home based off of the local schools nearby. My children are walkers to the elementary school, a short bus ride to Sarah Banks Middle School, and with the in-district school of choice, we were planning on sending them to Western because it is four minutes away from our house, and half of our subdivision Western because it is four minutes away from our house, and half of our subdivision is already districted for Western. We have created a village of support with the parents surrounding us. While our kids all attend multiple elementary school, elementary schools, we are brought together in middle school at Sarah Banks. We are there for one another when someone needs a ride, when someone is sick and needs to be picked up, when someone needs carpooling to sporting events after, or sporting events after school. We divide and conquer, which I feel is very rare in the world we live in now. It makes sense that middle schools should one-to-one mirror high schools, and because the community that is formed. What doesn't make sense is to rip apart the community that is already in place and has been in place for a long time. I know many Loon Lake Elementary families already in district, transferred to Western to keep that bond and network in place, which is why the original plan for September with Loon Lake going to Banks and then to Western makes the most sense. And if busing was an option for more families, I believe even more would choose to go to Western as well. There have been multiple surveys going around that I know were emailed to the board, and it shows an overwhelming number of families that would prefer the Loon Lake-Banks-Western route. I really hope that with this re, this new redistricting opportunity, the board will listen to the community and focus on the incoming students for years to come and what makes sense for them, instead of what has always been. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Cummings.
My name is Melissa Cummings. Thank you for taking the time for public comment tonight. Thank you for your service. And this is my first board meeting, but I'm speaking to you as a proud, long-term Wixom resident. I was born here, raised here, and just moved literally last year, selected and purchased a home off of the same road where I grew up. I'm a proud Wild Lake Western alumni. My dad ran the spare change school store at Wild Lake Western for over 30 years, so it is a fabric of my community. I selected a home to be in a feeder home for the Loon Lake Elementary School System, the school where I went to elementary school. My children will be going to Banks Middle School, and I was thrilled to see the original proposal, where finally it would be corrected and be back to where I grew up off Loon Lake Road, feeding into Wild Lake Western High School. It's the high school where we can walk. It is at the end of our, the road at the end of our subdivision is where Wild Lake Western resides. It's the logical, closest solution for Loon Lake system schoolchildren, so we were so relieved. We have a group of 25, 30 parents that are on daily threads that were celebrating the day that that decision and proposal was announced, to have it be Loon Lake-Banks to Wild Lake Western. An equal frustration and confusion the day that that decision was reversed, and the suggestion was made to be Loon Lake to Creek to Central. And then relief, we are glad that the pattern, at least the most recent decision, is to go Loon Lake to Banks. But my request and plea to you as the board today is to consider that original proposed solution of Loon Lake to Banks to Wild Lake Western. It would allow my children, children in our subdivision, who are walkers to Loon Lake today, who would be bike riders to Banks, to allow them to be bike riders to Wild Lake Western, instead of having to take a bus a long distance. I have to frankly Google Map. I don't even know where Central is, and I grew up in this area, so far removed from the Loon Lake area. I know it is important. You put the priority on keeping the children that are in their current feeder patterns together. I think we can work together as a community to come up with a short-term solution for the next three years for those students that want to continue in their current patterns, while still preserving what is the best long-term solution for the community, for homeowners like me, that I elected to move my family last year from Bloomfield Hills Schools District to the Wild Lake School System, because I believe so firmly in the success of this district. And a more logical solution for the logistics for the Loon Lake students is something I'm urging you to consider. For those of us that will have students in the high school pattern for the next 10 or 15 years, let's do what's right in the long term and work together on better short-term solutions.
Thank you. Matt Hawkins. Matt, Matt Hawkins.
I'm a father of four in our school district, and I live by Loon Lake Elementary. I'm here to advocate in delay of the decision on the proposed rezoning, same thing that other people are here for tonight. I speak on behalf of many parents, parents and friends. It's alarming how many issues are in the proposed plan, and I hope to share some with you tonight. I also plead with you to reconsider the original September plan and listen to the community that came here today. So the proposed plan, as it is currently, has not followed the precedent of community involvement that has occurred in the past when performing splits. The board has not explained why the initial September plan, which reduced splits and aligned with community preferences, was abandoned. The proposed plan to reduce splits and, well, the proposed plan claims to reduce splits and impact fewer students. However, data shows the original plan in September would achieve these goals more effectively. Two recent surveys indicated that an overwhelming majority percent of families supported a plan like the one drafted in September. The board's reasoning for the revision, including reducing the number of school splits and affecting fewer students, these claims are misleading, as the original draft plan would have reduced splits even further and impacted fewer students in the future. The rationale provided by the board so far is unsubstantiated. Separating children from peers have had, have grown up, will have negative impacts in the future on their well-being and sense of stability. We should consider the whole district in this decision, not just the 350 high school The proximity of Central and Western is similar distance from Meadowbrook residents. Loon Lake residents are mostly closer to Western. The zoning does not make sense and will result in a huge increase in traffic and impact families' work schedules and extracurricular activities. The board has mentioned 350 students need transportation. Has a study been performed to substantiate this data? The high school parking lots are full. If the board makes this decision, the data should be provided to substantiate this.
30 seconds.
The proposed plan does not ensure equitable representation of demographics. The parents would like to know why the proposed plan isolates students with subsidized housing and lunches. The cost of logistics and transportation for the current high school students is unclear. How many students would require transportation because of their ability to drive, carpool, et cetera? What is the cost for this percentage? The perception of the wider community is that this whole decision was made without consideration of anyone except for a group of 350 high school students. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to do my best here. Melissa Klabin. Was I close?
Hi, I'm Melissa Klabin. I have a third grader at Loon Lake and a seventh grader at Sarah Banks. So this decision on redistricting has a big impact on our family. On the family, sorry. Okay. What, everyone said everything I've wanted to say. What I'm looking for is a way to support you. Once this decision is made, how do I support you with my seventh grader? How do I explain to him that you're looking out for his best interest when you are taking him away from his other friends? I'm looking for more transparency and data, and asking you to pause the decision if you don't have that information prepared to share with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie Crafton.
Tonight I'm doing public comment, because I'm not a board member tonight. I'd like to congratulate and welcome Lisa and Mike to the board table this evening, and to say goodbye to Peggy Casa Grande. I'll be sitting in her chair starting in January with immense shoes to fill. I'm grateful for your dedication to our district, 16 long years. I'm grateful for your commitment to public education that is just unwavering, and you put a lot of hard work and heart into coming to the right decisions for kids. I'm incredibly grateful for your mentorship, for your leadership of this district during hard times, and I hope I can spend a smidgen of the energy and the respect that I have for you on behalf of our community. Thank you so much, truly. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Jackie Gerwin.
I don't think I need to introduce myself to you guys, but those of you in the audience who don't know me, my name is Jackie Gerwin. I'm a former Wild Lake parent and the current director of the Foundation for Excellence. As many of you know, the purpose of the FFE is to provide grant funds to classrooms for additional tools and resources. I wanted to take a couple minutes to give you an update as to what we've accomplished in the past year. This past spring, we were able to give back nearly $52,000 to classrooms across the district. Over half of those funds went to support literacy tools, including decodable books, magnetic letter trays, and other reading materials. We also were able to fund things like heart rate monitors, drums and keyboards for music rooms, Makerspace supplies, light tables for art classes, and printing costs for a school newspaper at Geisler Middle School. Beyond our classroom grants, we supported 19 students in the district with scholarships for participation in marching band through the Schuman Performing Arts Grants. Additionally, we provided $2,500 to assist the ATP Adult Special Education Program with supplies for their coffee cart business, and nearly $1,500 to Title I elementary schools to ensure that all fifth graders get to experience fifth grade camp. So what's going on right now? Our 2025 grant application is open now through January 6, and we're looking back at giving another $50,000 back this year. We currently only have 21 submissions, so if you're a teacher and you're listening, please consider submitting. We want to make sure we can give all that money out. And right now, we're kicking off our tuition expedition raffle, where we split the proceeds 50/50 with the grand prize winner. Historically, the winner has gotten over $10,000 in scholarship funds for post-secondary education. Doesn't even have to be your kid. It can be a grandkid, it can be a niece, a nephew, the nice neighbor down the street, whoever you might want to give that money to. And if you can't find somebody, you can take that as a 40% lump sum of the proceeds. I'm hoping that we can count on everybody sitting up at that table to purchase at least one ticket and support the FFE, while you get a chance to win the grand prize. Tickets are $50 each, and if you win, and you have young kids, we'll hold the money for 20 years, so it'll still be there when they're ready to go to college. In the new year, you should also keep an eye out for our golf scramble registration, the start of our kindergarten welcome kit sales, and in April, we'll be bringing back our superstar staff awards, where you can give your favorite staff member a chance to win one of two $500 prizes from the Wild Lake Schools Federal Credit Union. As you can see, we have a lot of great things going on, and that we, like you, are passionate about supporting our staff and students across the district. We appreciate you, and we thank you for doing the best for every child, every day. And a quick shout-out, thank you Peggy for all your years and assisting me through so many things. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Klaasa.
I'm here once again to talk about my friend Dakota. I'm going to tell you a story, and this story is not my story. This story came from five people who were very close to Dakota in her early years. I can't peg the actual year, but this story either occurred in 2019 or 2020, but it's a true story and can be corroborated by said five people. The gist of the story is that Dakota was at training and came back from training with burns on her neck. Of the five people, they get different descriptions. Ooh, they're ugly burns. Ooh, they were horrible burns. Oh, my gosh, poor Dakota. But the general consensus was that Dakota came back with burns on her neck. Okay? We get into some various other conversations, parts of it, you know, but the conversations all ended in a very awkward way, which was, every, all five of those folks, all I know is I'm against the use of shock collars. The manual says you use E-collars. E-collars are shock collars. I don't care what the dosage is. My dad's a retired electrician. I've been around it all my life. Here you go, community, I'm going to get you started. Why do we train with shock collars? Okay? They're really not necessary, and if you think about it, shock collars are a negative training method. These dogs are supposed to be positive. They're supposed to be trained in a positive manner. Next question. Was Dakota the only one that this happened to? Because if you think about it, Dakota is the only dog in the district where burn marks would really show up. She's the only yellow-white lab. And this third one's been bugging me for a while. You all know that in the first meeting I was here, I said I had proof that on May 31st, Dakota was diagnosed with a heart murmur, potential heart conditions. Why would you send Dakota to refresh her training last July when she had these potential heart conditions? I don't know anything about Dakota. I haven't seen her up close in six months, to this day.
30 seconds.
Okay? That's the gist of what I wanted to kind of bring to light. In the previous two meetings I've been here, I've told you how overworked Dakota is. I've also told you that the manual says you should have planted on work in this lab and all your labs in the district for 10 years. Average age of a lab is 10 years. Folks, don't you think we might want to readdress what's going on with the therapy dog program? Just ask me, I got ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabby Tiaga.
Hi, my name is Gabby Tiaga. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I was at the last meeting and was able to listen to public comments about Dakota the dog, and then board members speak about safety concerns and opportunities. One spoke of their feelings and safety as a member of this board, which I found a bit insulting, considering they don't seem very concerned about the feelings and safeties of the girls in our district. A grown woman wants to pass policies to muzzle board members on social media, which, to remind you, is a violation of the First Amendment, instead of focusing on passing policies to protect our girls' safety and spaces. Another member gave a very personal insight into how she became the woman she is. She spoke of her mother's journey through school and having to take the path forced upon her because she was a girl. I quote, "Because at that time, girls had to take this, and boys took that. When the time came for her to have her own children, she wanted better. She wanted more opportunities for her girls." Those opportunities exist because of the original Title IX ruling implemented in 1972. Any woman who was before, born before 1972, was born with fewer opportunities than this board member's mom wanted for her girls. I was born after 1972, I won't say what year exactly, and I was born with all the opportunities I could ever have. I went my whole life knowing I could study and play any sport. My daughter was born in 2008 with the same opportunity as me, but in her lifetime, she has to witness her space and safety be put in jeopardy by boys who want what's hers. Now onto public comments about Dakota. I won't lie, I do love that dog. My daughter has been out of this district for two years and still speaks highly of her. That all being said, it's very frustrating that this community seems more concerned about a dog than their daughters and sisters' safety and future opportunities. In August of this year, the United Nations issued a report called "The Violence Against Women and Girls: Its Causes and Consequences." According to the information received, by March of 24, March of 2024, over 600 female athletes in more than 400 competitions have lost more than 890 medals in 29 different sports. Lots of numbers. Think about that. Those are just the numbers of medals, not the opportunities taken from them, not the scholarships lost, and not the number of girls who gave up just because it was easier to be quiet. So again, I remind everyone, science taught by this district teaches our children that women and girls have XX and women and girls have XX and men and boys have XY. This district fought hard to follow the science when it came to masks and disregards it when it comes to the safety of our girls and young women. Our girls continue to be collateral damage in this social experiment. I will end with a quick quote. "We deserve a chance to compete and win, so don't be nice, don't be careful, and be honest and be brave. Fight for women. We've come too far to give up now, and if you agree with that, stand up and stand with us." Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Mitchell?
My name is Karen Mitchell, and my husband is Brian Mitchell. We are parents of one alumni from 2024, and we currently have a seventh grader in the district. I am here this evening to talk about our classroom sizes within the district. Recently, we went to parent-teacher conferences, and that was when it really became an eye-opener for us. Our daughter is struggling with English. She is currently two grade levels behind. My husband and I were shocked to hear this. We asked what can be done to help our daughter get up to grade level? Maybe staying after school for help or during class time? Is there extra help available? Sadly, her teacher has absolutely no extra time to help her. She would love to help, but her hands are tied. She not only teaches seventh grade, she also teaches eighth grade. Our classroom sizes reaching sometimes 35 children makes it impossible to focus on these children that are struggling. How exactly are we going to get our children proficient in these basic, common core subjects? I've gone to board meetings, I've emailed administrators, and I've spoken to teachers in this district. Everyone agrees our classroom sizes are way too big, yet no one has a plan of action to fix this. All while my child, who is in school 40 hours a week, is still struggling to be proficient at her grade level. Please help me understand how to fight to fix this. Her teachers cannot help her in the free time because they have absolutely no free time. We want to be the voice for our teachers and children, but need to know where to take this fight. The teachers' union, the Department of Education, how can we fix this? I want to work with our teachers and the administration. Our children are suffering in this district. This is a subject we have been battling for so many years. We are open to any and all suggestions or collaborations so that our children and teachers can be heard. I know we send board members to conferences every year to supposedly advocate for our kids, but when do we start advocating to solve this problem? And in the meantime, when do we stop making excuses about funding and staffing and everything else and just find a way to get it done? You want our students and staff to be strong, be resilient, figure it out, but we cannot keep failing at every turn. I stand with our students, our teachers, and our families. We need to solve this problem ASAP, and I expect some type of response from somebody on this board.
Thank you. Nancy Van Loon?
I'm here to echo what has already been stated about Mrs. Casa Grande, who I shall call Peggy because I consider her a good friend. We've served together in many capacities over the past years, and as I look at the board table with new members, even some of you who have served many years, it's my real hope that you will all make a special attempt to emulate Mrs. Casa Grande, Peggy, and the work she has done for this board. She's a consummate board member. She, through her leadership time, was able to keep calm and peace. She has had some extraordinary circumstances as a board president and was able to muster her way through all of that with calm and dignity and patience. She shows that same patience, I believe, in her dealings with all of the people that she deals with on a board level. I have such admiration for her ability to recall even the minute details about things that have happened during her term as a board member. She can probably tell you the date of some of our hires or some of the conferences or some of the issues that we've dealt with. I truly believe that she was there for the right reasons. She cared about the staff. She cared about the students. She cared about the families in our district. She cared about the Wald Lake School District as a whole. Her reason for being there was to give, to help, to influence for good. I can't think of a better board member, and it is my hope that those of you who are new to the board, those of you who have been there, those of you who have been there forever, that you will remind yourselves of that kind of dignity, of that kind of ability, of that kind of caring, and bring that forth as you carry on. So thank you, Peggy. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for your years of dedication to this school district.
Thank you. Ron Lippett?
Thank you, Madam President. Thunder Steelers, all of you. Allow me to welcome incoming board members Lisa West and Mike Smith, and congratulate again Mr. Sigler and Mrs. Crafton next month. What a moment to be part of this esteemed body, given the important work to be handled in this session. But before I get to that, I would be remiss to pass up the opportunity to share a few words about Peggy Casa Grande on this, her final appearance as a Wald Lake School Board Member. If I do this right, this will be a delicate mix of both praise and humor. I've gotten to know Ms. Casa Grande these past two years, and to state the obvious, she's incredibly gifted. She is talented. She is truly caring. She is an asset to this body, and we will miss her impact on this community greatly, especially in the days to come. Mrs. Casa Grande can be described in superlatives. One of them I might use is "prepared." Many of you don't know this, but she holds on to every board document she's ever accrued over her 16 years of service, and I just assume she's got some kind of great vault in her basement for this very purpose. I'm assuming some kind of whole cabinet or filing system devoted to some kind of organization. I suspect this because she dumped many of these documents on me when I joined the board service last year, saying something along the lines of, "Here, read this, call me with questions." And that's exactly what happened. So to Mrs. West, to Mr. Smith, good luck. Be warned, you've got a little time still with her. Mostly, I wanted to express a personal thanks to her for taking on this role. She does it with absolute dedication and professionalism, as has been shared at this podium. I've said this many times, Ms. Casa Grande, Peggy, you are a perfect template for board service, and I hope that generations to follow will see your example as how best to be an unflinching advocate for our students, our staff, and our community as a whole. So as a parent of three daughters who benefited directly from your leadership, please allow me to express my thanks while I still can. May your basement be filled with travel and biking-related materials in the future. With my remaining time, please allow me to express my thanks overall to the board for your professionalism, your flexibility, your transparency during the district repurposing process. Yes, this is a necessary part of board service to sometimes make tough decisions using data and trending. I particularly appreciate the board's attention to our community's feedback in listening carefully to concerns, to have the willingness to pivot based on input, and to arrive at the best decision you can under the circumstances. I know some conclusions are not fun. I recognize there's never a perfect answer in tasks like this, especially in cases where families are impacted. So thank you for your hard work and dedication in all that you do and towards strengthening our district for the future. Lastly, I just would like to remind folks that at Wald Lake Central this weekend, Friday through Sunday, is One Block Stories, and it is a fantastic event. I hope all of you have seen and will participate in. And with that, I say thank you very much.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Say on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from November 7th, 2024, from our regular meeting, personnel recommendations, financial reports, disbursements in the amount of $28,743,797. We have the Head Start Directors Report, and we have bid awards over $50,000. Dr. Lons?
Oh, no, we need to go back to Head Directors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Yes, Mrs. Casa Grande. Sorry, I'm jumping.
We're good. I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Now, we'll move on to Dr. Lons.
Thank you. I'm very excited about bid pack number eight. The Wald Lake Consolidated School District solicited and received bids for the Wald Lake Northern High School operations and maintenance and renovations to Wald Lake Central, mechanical upgrades identified to be funded through the 2019 bond proceeds. The bid process was facilitated through mutual effort of our administration, TMP, PMR, AUC, and the whole team. The recommendation from the team is to award the big bid package to the recommended contractor, excuse me, as the lowest responsive bidders in an amount not to exceed $17,608,456.23. I usually don't have to read the numbers, that's hard. Including all the recommended alternatives. Just some highlights as to where the work is going to be done. At Northern, there's demo work in this, and we'll put on some really great-looking roofs. We'll be working with the panels. This will be really exciting. We get new windows, which will help us with our efficiencies related to energy. We'll be doing some new flooring. We'll have some painting done. The auditorium seating will be replaced. Both gyms will be air-conditioned, and there'll be some additional cameras and replacing of cameras. The operations will be doing some demo, some roofing, some windows, painting. The bathrooms will get renovated at operations, and we'll have a significant amount of paving where the buses are parked. So we'll have a new paving area in that particular location. And at Wald Lake Central, it's demoing, doing the mechanical work, and then painting afterwards.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Levin.
Now it's my turn to read the number. I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for WLCSD 2019 bond projects, bid package number eight for Wald Lake Northern, operations and maintenance renovations, and Wald Lake Central mechanical upgrades for an amount not to exceed $17,608,456.23, funded from bond proceeds as recommended by the project team.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Contract for security glazing services, Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Madam President. Wald Lake Consolidated School District solicited and received bids for security glazing for identified areas throughout the district to promote safety and security. The bid was facilitated through the mutual efforts of administration, TMP, PMR, and AUC Construction. The recommendation from the team is to award the contract to Michigan Glass Coatings, who is the lowest responsive bidder in an amount not to exceed $204,234.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to enter a contract with Michigan Glass Coatings to provide security glazing services in an amount not to exceed $204,234, funded from the school's safety grants.
Support.
Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Madam President, just wondering, what is, just so the audience as well, what is the lifetime warranty on this? Is there a lifespan of use?
There's a warranty with it. I apologize, I don't know whether it's tenure or lifetime, but there is a warranty with it. I can get that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Facility study recommendation, Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Madam President. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wells.
And Dr. Lons and board members? Perfect, thank you. So again, tonight, I was taking a look at the repurpose of Geisler Middle School relative to the kind of continuation of the 2018-2023 facility utilization planning study. At the end of the day, some of the goals and objectives, again, coming off the 2018 plan, obviously you can see the decreased enrollment. We were actually talking with several other districts who have similar experiences of making some of these tough decisions. But again, a decrease of roughly 3,400 students over the last 12 years, predominantly at the high schoo-, or I'm sorry, at the middle school levels. Again, the purpose of this facility was really to truly identify which of those four middle schools could potentially be repurposed. These goals were actually to look for spaces for adult transitions. I believe you heard from an individual tonight about some of the benefits of Geisler being recommended from that perspective. Also in the bond program, the 2024 bond, as Mr. Donnelly mentioned, there are funds for all three remaining middle schools, as well as for Geisler being repurposed going forward. Again, at the end of the day, we took a look at the existing four middle schools, taking a look at the 12 elementary schools, how ultimately they would go to a three-middle school to a three-high school transition. And this is really the work of about 60 people over two and a half months' time period in September, October, with several updates to the board through that process, with really some of the goals is to reduce the number of splits, also to determine new spaces for ATP. So again, right now, this is the current feeder pattern with the 12 elementary schools, the four middle schools, and three high schools. Currently, there are no splits of elementary to middle school, so it's pretty important as the community looked at that, and also taking a look at the splits currently in place, potentially reducing from the current existing number. So this is the existing boundaries of the elementary schools as it stands today. And again, the existing boundary, middle school at the high school, or I'm sorry, at the middle school level going forward, with the four middle schools in consideration. So the original proposal, again, took a look at keeping the elementary schools all together. So that was one of the major concerns, and also potentially looking at ultimately into the middle school, into the high school feeder patterns. And here you can see one of the results, again, does that in terms of, I'll call it the spatial relations, if you will. But some of the things we heard from that was what about transportation? What about breaking up the current feeder pattern of elementary ultimately to the high school level going forward? So one of the things you're going to see tonight is the recommended proposal. Again, Geisler is still the being recommended facility for being repurposed. The three would mainly be Smart, Walnut Creek, and Banks. With this proposal, there is the opportunity to reduce the number of splits, but also maintain the current elementary-to-the-high-school pattern, which we'll talk about here in a little bit going forward. Some of the other considerations that we took a look at was taking a look, again, dedicating that space at Geisler for the new ATP. What changed from the original to the revised, again, was being least disruptive. And anytime you go from four middle schools to three, there will be some disruptions. Again, maintaining that current high school feeder pattern was also very important. Transportation did look at both models, and the revised model that you do see does actually have less transportation, and also the need to adjust bell times because of the travel distances between the two going forward. Taking a look, we took a look at Banks, the revised, does allow for future growth. So the good news is in each of these models going forward, you're about 85% to 90% utilized, which again does allow for some capacity of growth. And as I mentioned, the revised repurpose recommended proposal does maintain that current high school feeder pattern as it currently states. Some of the other considerations, again, we talked about keeping the elementary schools together. Again, this does, the recommended proposal does reduce those splits from three down to two. And as I mentioned, the Wald Lake students, they go to Banks and ultimately go to Wald Lake as it currently stands, and then the same thing for Middle Brick in terms of leaving Creek, and then they'll go to Wald Lake Western as they currently do. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Madam President, Dr. Lons and the board for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Sigler? No? No questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you much.
Mrs. Kaplan, do you want? Who do you want to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the facility study recommendation as presented.
Support.
Discussion. Mrs. Levin?
Since this motion is not crystal clear, can somebody clarify exactly what that recommendation
Mr. Wells, do you mind going back?
Mr. Wills, do you mind going back to a couple slides before--
I apologize.
So the motion is to repurpose Geisler and to have that as a new feeder pattern?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll continue.
Back to the discussion, yep.
Yep.
Go ahead, Ms. Levin.
All right. So I prepared some comments so that I don't fall off track here. The community has spoken, both tonight and through dozens and dozens of emails over the last several weeks. We can't say that the majority of the facilities committee agreed, when barely half of the committee even responded, and a very small majority of that barely half, only 21 people, were in support of the most recent map up here. The committee felt disenfranchised. The community feels disenfranchised. And for what? What's the hurry? Why not get it right, right now? The presentation we just watched set a goal was three middle schools to three high schools. Now, for people inside the ketchup bottle, that might just mean literally three buildings in three buildings. But for a parent who saw the presentation in September, that meant the same three middle schools go to their three high schools. And so, up until November 7th, the community thought the very first map was the map. We received no feedback as board members that there was a problem with that map. It wasn't until that map changed on November 7th that all of a sudden, that was a problem. And you said in the presentation you wanted it to be the least disruptive, but disruptive to whom? As a parent of teenagers, it doesn't take much to disrupt a teenager. Sometimes just saying "good morning" to a teenager is enough to set them off. So I digress. My own children have gone through what is being proposed tonight for us to vote on. They're going to a different high school than their middle school classmates are going to. Sure, this was by our choice, we left the district. And they're still with the kids that they went to elementary school with in the district, but it has been difficult for them. Those friendships don't come back. We can sit here and say all day that these kids will reconnect with their elementary school classmates, but that will not happen. We can sit here all day and say that kids are resilient, but how resilient do our kids need to be to keep dealing with the decisions of the Wall Lake School Board and the administration? We forced them to learn virtually during COVID, and then we forced them to wear masks when they went back to school. And now we're trying to force a decision that the parents of the very children who will be affected by this don't support. In a recent discussion with my kid's high school--
Okay, Ms. Levin, excuse me for one second. I know you guys are all passionate, but please keep your comments and let Ms. Levin finish without interruption. Thank you.
In a discussion that I recently had with my kid's high school principal, I was reminded of the mission statement of our district. It starts "Our Mission: In Partnership with Parents and Community." We should not take that lightly. Parents and the community matter more than what an auditing firm-- no offense, Paul-- or numbers on a spreadsheet tell us. Numbers and money follow, they do not lead. We have a chance tonight to get this right. And so, I'm making an alternate motion. I move that the Board of Education proceed with taking Geisler offline, repurposing it, and with using the first map from September 26th as the redistricting plan.
A second. See, I appreciate you making the motion, but we already have an motion on the table that we have to deal with first.
It doesn't matter, Robert's rules said you can have an amended motion. It's been seconded, and now we have to vote on it.
Okay, well, let's vote, and then we can move on from there.
You have to open the discussion.
May I?
Go ahead, Ms. West.
So I also have concerns, and I've expressed that to Dr. Lons and a few other board members. So I also prepared a statement. So I agree with the closure of Geisler due to space and enrollment compared to other middle schools, and to relocate the ESC and ATP. I have concerns regarding the middle school splits. The original idea for the bond, as presented to the public, was to have a feeder pattern from middle school to high school with no splits. Taxpayers voted on the bond and hopefully educated themselves in the vote with knowledge that changes would have to be made. I understand that some people are concerned regarding changing high schools due to the no splits. Those already in high school can either attend the new school they are assigned to or do a district transfer. I have already been informed by Dr. Lons that current ninth through eleventh graders would not be grandfathered into their current school, even if transportation was not provided by the district, which I suggested. I understand we cannot make everyone happy, but not having splits in the feeding pattern makes the most long sense long-term. Because I'm not looking at the short term, I want to look at the long-term goals. Families who are being affected by the change most are Geisler, Meadowbrook, and Loon Lake families. So I was glad to see that the map was changed from November's meeting that sent Loon Lake students across the district to Walnut Creek, when Sarah Banks is in her backyard. However, I believe September's original map with no splits makes the most sense. I would like to see Loon Lake students feed into Sarah Banks, then to Western, with the rest of Banks students also. And Meadowbrook students should feed into Walnut Creek, and then to Central with the rest of Creek students. With the exception of Clifford Smart, the three other middle schools already encountered splits. Many students do transfers to avoid splits, whether at the start of middle school or at high school, to follow along with friends they made in middle school. So my own family did this as a Glengarry family. We felt it was best to follow to CHS to Northern, then Creek to Northern, allowing my children to adapt better in the future, as they already knew students from other schools that would be attending CHS, so it's easy for them to transition. Other Glengarry families, who chose to follow the Creek feeder pattern, have then chose to transfer to Central, as they made friends that they did not want to part with in middle school. I believe that having no splits helps students who may deal with social anxiety, since they know who they are already surrounded by. Middle school years are essential to formulating relationships, and I believe they are crucial to carry on to high school for a majority of children. Again, taxpayers voted for this bond to close the middle school and to include no splits from middle school to high school. So let's carry out what the taxpayers agreed to in their yes vote to the bond.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Segler?
So as a parent of a child, and I'm going to repeat myself for those of you who haven't heard this. My daughter started kindergarten at Twin Sons. Grades one through four were at Maple. Grades five and six were at the school that we leased in Birmingham. Grade seven was in the portables at Western-- or at Wall Lake Middle. Grade eight, in the classroom, and you're shaking your head, so you remember all of this. And then nine through 12 was at Western. I asked my daughter last week--
I need to interrupt. Here's where I need to interrupt. According to Robert's Rules, once you have made a motion, and it has been seconded, and we are discussing, it needs to be finished. I am on page 5.5 and 5.4 of Robert's Rules. We cannot have the secondary motion. We have to consider the first motion first, who's made on the floor. Right here.
So if I--
It's right here. Otherwise, you would completely filibuster. You have to finish the first motion.
So anyways, I asked my daughter--
You need to take the other motion off and go back to the other motion.
Okay.
I asked--
We can look up and share the alternative, because a couple of us have been through Robert's Rules training.
So have I. So have I.
So have I.
It's right here.
So anyways--
Anyway, anyway. Mr. Segler can speak, and then we will discuss which way you're going with the motions.
So I asked my daughter, who is now a young parent, how she liked it. And she said, "Dad, the adults were making a bigger issue of this than the children were." She said, "As long as we were with our friends within the neighborhood, we were much happier than if we would have been split up." Now, I realize what we're looking at right now is maintaining the split the way it is. Now, the other thing we have to look at is, this was not a redistricting effort. This is a repurposing of a building where we are going to have to make some modifications. And I'm sorry, because we are not looking at redistricting. Well, we would be looking at redistricting in five years? Maybe it's possible. As we look at enrollment changes, it is very possible that we could be doing that. But we have to-- we, as parents, you know, when I listen to the crowd tonight, I hear Loon Lake, you know, maintain, go to Banks, go to Western. And then-- but you still have a group of parents there that are doing Loon Lake, that will be doing Banks, and that would be going to Central. There's still a small pocket of students that'll be up there. So at this point, I'm okay with making the modification for the facility study as it is presented, with the changes that we have made, and then looking at redistricting as we have to in probably five years.
Thank you, Mr. Segler. Any other comments? Mr. Smith?
I just want to say, maybe point of information, can we take a recess to have the time to look up? Is that good?
Yes, thank you. Before we go, before we do that, does anybody have any specific question, comment? Mr. Wills, did you? No? Okay.
I had one that has nothing to do with how we resolve a motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mrs. Fernandez.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that, in my personal opinion, and that matters little as a board, because we operate as a group, but in my personal opinion, it would be nice to be able to ask for a delay and to sort this out. But we have had conversations that indicate that there is some reasonable time expediency, and this is the second board meeting in a row, that we have things that need to pass now, or, you know, or things will go awry. And so, I think I've spoken before about not being super excited about that. I would like the time so that when we have an item of great import to the community, we actually can have an alternative that is to take a step back and make sure that we're either, you know, doing another bit of diligence, or, you know, or figuring it out, and the time between one meeting and another doesn't seem like too much to ask. But I do want to mention that that question was asked and answered as we were talking about it, you know, in some of our conversations and the information that's there. So, you know, either we ask to delay, and then that causes some grave damage, or we just look at which of the proposals are we about to vote on. And, you know, in my opinion, I would really like to make sure that we get things on agendas, and I have really no role in making sure what gets on an agenda when, with enough time to be able to reasonably say, "I'd like to delay this to the next meeting." And this is the second time that there's been a huge issue like that, and that is what I wanted to say about this. And I hope that people will start to understand in the community that we are asking for delays, and that is a natural first step. And if it seems like we're not, and we're just wanting to be, you know, like poop on the, you know, poop on the agenda thing, that that's not what's happening behind the scenes. So it would be great to be able to say, "Can we have some more time?" And I feel like that's not an option.
Thank you. We're going to follow Mr. Smith. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we will be back about 9:31. Thank you. Unless, and Mrs. Byer, who is the person that made the original motion? Mrs. Casagrande, you have the opportunity to accept the amendment as a friendly amendment. If you say yes to that, then that now becomes what we vote on, and the first motion doesn't exist anymore. If you do not accept that, then we must deal with the first motion first before, which means going through discussion and voting. That's how the process has to play out.
And that was my understanding. Thank you for confirming that. And I do not accept the second motion, and I want to consider the first motion that was on the table.
Okay, so now we're back to, do we want to clarify the motion so that everybody understands while we go back to discussion?
Yes.
No.
Yes, okay. The motion that's on the table is that the Board of Education approved the facility study recommended, recommendations as presented, which were what Mr. Wills presented and to us with the feeder patterns the way they were. That was the recommendation. So now we're on to discussion with regards to furthering that. Yes, go ahead, Ms. West.
So to clarify, it's the closed Geisler, and the two elementary schools that will be affected majorly will be Loon Lake and Meadowbrook, with Meadowbrook going on from Creek to Western, and then, Creek to Western, and then Loon Lake to Banks, and then Central. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what we are voting on?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, your mic's off. That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Fernandez.
Yeah, I have this, just the same comment that I had before. I really think it would behoove us to have a little bit of extra time to socialize and get stakeholder engagement. And while we've had the discussion, I'm wondering if Dr. Lons, you might express what the timeline, what the time urgency is so that it's clear why we have to do this now and we can't wait, if that is indeed your recommendation.
Sure. We're following a timeline that we set out in August. And the reason why the vote was set up the way that it was is that as, if this is approved, we then have to redistribute the current sixth and seventh graders from Geisler. They would then go to their respective new middle schools. And during that time, they would have the opportunity to register for courses so that we can build our course schedule, so that we can place our teachers. We have, and not just teachers, we have a number of staff that at Geisler need to be placed moving into the '25, '26 school year. And to make sure that we can do that appropriately and efficiently, we need the time to do that. So postponing this vote would not allow us the time to get the schedules, to do the scheduling, and to place the teachers in a fashion in which we're accustomed to in the district.
And if I can just clarify, those activities that you mentioned that have to get done, have to get done not immediately or not during this school year, but in advance and in preparation to happen in the coming school year. Is that correct?
If we are to repurpose Geisler, we need to do it now. If we are to continue students at Geisler, this would be, we'd be in the same spot this time in 2025.
Okay, okay. So the bit that, the bit that applies to Geisler happens immediately. What about the bit that happens with the feeder patterns?
Well, the feeder patterns help define how we build our transportation department. And would also help, that would also be part of our in-district transfer if someone wanted to maintain or change their feeder pattern. The in-district transfer has to be done at the same time, which is at the beginning of January, because we need to know what students are going to what schools.
Okay, and that applies then, that all of that transportation stuff applies in the new school year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I thought that would be helpful to share for everyone.
Thank you for the questions.
Mrs. Kaplan?
Mrs. Casagrande?
So I'd like us to think a little higher level. And here's where I'm going with this. We have a fiscal responsibility to this district. We have a, we looked at utilization. The first part of this study was to look at what percent of utilization we had in our buildings, and to see if there's any course correct that we potentially needed to look at. And one of the things we then came to is that, I believe we had about 60%-ish sometime utilization in the middle schools. And so that's not fiscally responsible to have 60%. Typically, you want to have around 80 to 90%, right? And we even have a goal that is set up for the superintendent around that. And we have asked our employee, the superintendent, to go execute this for us. So that's one. Two, we have a special education program called Adult Transitions Program, ATP. The last time that we had a bond here, we were not able to do everything that we wanted to do. We had some changes. Those students are looking and they're waiting for us to do something for them so that they can continue to succeed. It's another piece that we need to be thinking about. Ultimately, the reason we're doing this is because there's reduced number of students. And it's not just here, it's in other places. Absolutely, these are difficult situations. Absolutely, we are not going to make everybody happy. But we have had a lot of people involved in this, and we have asked our employee, the superintendent, he didn't do this on his own. He talked with a lot of people, he had a committee. We heard from people who were not happy, and we went back to the committee. We followed the process and the protocol. We need to be working at a higher level here. I've been through this before. This is repurposing, I've been through redistricting. This is repurposing. This is different. It also will allow us on down the line to no longer have this building again, reducing our footprint, be more fiscally responsible, and putting the ESC inside the repurposed Geisler building. There are so many high-level things that we need to be looking at as a board, and I implore us to do that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mrs. Fernandez.
So I just want to make sure it's crystal clear. I have no problem repurposing Geisler and being fiscally responsible, relocating ATP to its own home, moving the ESC to a different building, taking this building offline, no problem. The difference is, I believe that the map from '926 is the map we should follow. That's it. If the costs are negligibly the same, fiscally, doesn't matter. It matters to the parents, it matters to the families, it matters to the students for things that people aren't even thinking about right now. That's it.
So I agree with Mrs. Casagrande regarding the higher vision. And I am looking at the higher vision. I agree with the Geisler closing and that we are accommodating ATP in a more permanent solution. I think that that's necessary. Meadowbrook and Loon Lake both have similar enrollments. So that's why I'm thinking that, being that the enrollment itself is not going to change all that drastically, since you're looking at maybe 10, 20 students. So I think that we need to consider that and make sure that we're not having splits, because it's really imperative for our middle school students to move on with their friends, to reduce that mental and social anxiety. And I think that once they already make those bonds, especially whether they're academically gifted or challenged, they depend on those students already and their friends, and are able to develop that, so they may go ahead and be more successful academically. So I think this is something we really need to consider, that we just make that switch to the September map.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Madam President, I just have a couple, I guess, questions for Dr. Lons. What number of potential kids would become or would be offered potentially in district school of choice if they're requested to move to their current feeder pattern high school?
Are you referring to the Loon Lake kids?
Yes.
Students are currently attending Central?
Yeah.
We'd have about 166 students as of today that would have to make it, that would have to try to get back to Central if we changed the feeder pattern to Western.
And can we handle everyone potentially if they did request that change?
Yes. It would be, for Meadowbrook, it would be 187 students that would have to request in-district transfer.
Would they get, I don't know how the best to say it, but the front of, you know, the first?
For our high schools, both of our high schools have enough room that we can accommodate any request for in-district transfer. Now, there's some other parts to that.
Yes.
And the biggest part is for in-district transfers, we do not provide transportation. So for someone to maintain their current high school, they would have to figure out how to get there.
What would be the timeline for, to measure this, to see, would it be, you know, in a year after the first year, the metrics of how we're seeing what transportation issues that might be arising with traffic? Whatever the patterns might be, are you going to come back to us within six months, a year, two years, to potentially have to maybe relook at true redistricting? I was part of redistricting as well over 12 years ago, and I understand these decisions are tough. You cannot please everyone. You're doing what's best interest of the school. So I'm just curious, what would be the measurable metrics? At what points would we see moving forward?
So the plan that we're voting on at this particular moment would not affect traffic flow, would not affect number of cars, any more than any other year that it would. What I would recommend as a general concept, and this is best practice, is every three to five years in a district that's in decreasing enrollment, which we still are, that we would conduct another facility study. The advantage that we have if we do it within that timeframe is that Plant, Moran, Real Point, that's part of the contract we already have with them. So there'd be no additional cost to do that. And I believe that that would be the most appropriate time to do it, because that would give a complete cohort of middle school students to go through middle school. And that would allow us to confirm where the students are going and what the current enrollment is in our high schools.
Follow-up with that, you know, as a parent as well, what about the social-emotional needs of the students handling these changes? We know about resilience, we know that not everyone handles things the same way. What will we have in place for staff available for any potential issues that might arise?
So I'm happy to say that we have Mrs. Koransky and Mr. Scaling are working with our middle school principals right now and a greater team to work on two parts of that. One is what additional programmings can we offer? And the second part of that is what can we offer as part of school-community building as we move to three middle schools? So regardless of, assuming that Geisler gets repurposed, and assuming that happens at basically the end of June, we need not only work with our staffs and help make sure that they have opportunities to work together as they're combining into a new family, but also have time for our students to come together as they're coming into a new family.
I guess, final question, just what are some of the key strengths of this potential change? I just, of course, want to make sure that's provided front and center to the district.
Sure. The first strength is it maintains the current high school feeder patterns. And for our current high schoolers, that is what And for our current high schoolers, that is what's important. For people that purchased homes in those areas, when they, actually, to be clear, for people that purchased homes in Loon Lake, that is a feeder pattern if they purchase in the last 12 to 13 years. That's one. Number two is it disrupts the least amount of students as of today. So if this is implemented and implemented is for 25, 26, it disrupts the least amount of students.
Ms. West?
Just another question regarding staffing. Those who have seniority in the district, who we, how will you guys determine who is placed as far as staffing goes? Would they have, is it according to in-district or versus in-school?
I'm sorry, when you say in-district and in-school, I'm a little confused.
So if a teacher has more seniority in Geisler versus a first-year teacher in, say, Creek, who ha, who will be more likely, like if you had to bump a teacher, unfortunately, I don't want to necessarily think of this way, but if this has to happen, if we have to consider staffing purposes, will the teacher at Geisler with more seniority have the privilege of teaching or will the teacher with the first year, because they're already at Creek, have their position?
Sure. So Mr. Hampka, I'm going to take a stab at this, and then if I mess it up, you can correct me, okay? I've had the opportunity to meet with the Geisler staff in person twice. And Mr. Hampka went over earlier this week, I believe, on Monday, to, to speak with them. Mr. Hampka went over there to speak with them just on the topic that you, you just asked about, what the processes that we're using. Now, in our contract with the WLEA, there's actual contract language when it comes to closing a building. So it's a little bit different than typical restaffing that I've had the opportunity to do by predecessor. Now, Mr. Hampka has the opportunity to do. And there's many factors that play into it. In this particular case, both times when I went to speak at Geisler and to the staff at Geisler, and when I say staff, it's not just the teachers. We're working with the secretaries, we're working with food service, we're working with all of our staff. We do not see a situation in which anyone will be laid off. So everyone that would like a job will have a job from every piece of data that we have right now. So in your example, who is placed at Creek, there's a lot of variables that go into that. But that first-year teacher and your, I believe you said 25th-year teacher? Yep. I'm sorry? 28th, yeah. They're both going to have jobs. And so just like whenever we do placement, there's a, many variables that fall into that. Certification is one. Past experience is one. Evaluation is one. Seniority is a factor of that, but it's not the only factor of that. Mr. Hampka, did I do okay on that? All right, thank you.
I have a follow-up question then. What about our more specialized teachers with certifications, like in our music department, PE, things like that, where we're already covered throughout the district? Will they have an opportunity to have a job still?
Yeah, vocal music is a great example of that. Right now, we have two vocal music teachers for four middle schools. When we go to three middle schools, we will need three vocal music teachers, because as we combine, we can increase that programming again. And so when it comes to the encore, which are electives in the middle school, I believe that we will have a spot for all of them. Now, will it be the same spot that they're in right now? And by that, I mean the specific classes that they're teaching. It might not be, right? That's just the reality. But that's the same reality that they faced and that I faced as a teacher when I was teaching, right? And so we will do our very best. We've committed to that. I, I'd like to applaud the associations, as they've been working with us on this process. We've, we've been developing plans together to make sure that when we have unique situations like this, that we're doing what's in the best interest of the district, our students, and our staff.
Mrs. Fernandez?
I have a question. I think I heard it said more than once that one of the different, one of the differentiators is we won't necess, we don't, we could, but we don't necessarily provide transportation to the, to the families or the kids that want to choose to go to the other school, right? But it sounded like we could, like, you know, maybe, is that a decision yet to be made? Is it something that we can commit to do since we've got spanky new buses? And we have, you know, folks that voted on a $250 million bond probably thinking that they were going to have that feeder pattern? Is that maybe something that we can commit to do so that, so that families don't have to worry about transportation if they choose to go to the alternative feeder plan that is not what we're voting on tonight?
Yeah. So I, I think a point of clarification, because I, I did go do the bond presentations. Never was feeder pattern mentioned as a part of the bond presentation. The part of the bond presentation related only to the middle school, and were we closing a middle school or repurposing a middle school? That was the only thing that we talked about during the bond presentation. Secondly, we don't have enough drivers. So even if we had enough buses, we don't have enough drivers to do double bus runs for three years. Nor, nor do I believe that that would be financially responsible for us to do that.
So we won't. It's not, it's not something?
I just said we don't have enough drivers.
No, well, that's a hiring thing, right?
I suppose everything's a hiring thing, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But it's not that we have it and we're choosing not to do it. It's that we don't have it and we, we haven't had it for three years.
Yeah, okay. And I don't know if, I understand what you're saying about Geisler being the focus, but I think the one chart that Plant Moran showed us tonight pretty clearly had the schools mapped.
Correct, but that was not part of the bond presentation in May. That's what you stated. If I, unless I misunderstood what you said, I apologize.
No, not in May, in the September one.
Right. That had nothing to do with the bond passing.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So if I misunderstood, I apologize.
No, no, no.
That's on me.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for three. Sure. Sure, we will. Mrs. Byer? Can you do a roll call, please?
Yep, of course. Mrs. Casa Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Fernandez?
Yeah, nay. No.
Mrs. Levin? Mr. Siegler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Mrs. West? Mrs. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say we're going to move on to, I keep turning my mic off. We're going to move on to the appointment of the architect. Dr. Lons?
For more than 35 years, TMP Architecture, Inc. in Bloomfield Hills has provided architectural design services for new construction and renovations across the district. TMP is always a committed, collaborative, customer-focused, design process partner that results in attractive facilities that are functional and meet the instructional needs of the students and staff of all Lake Consolidated School District. The administration recommends continuing use of TMP architecture and architectural services not to exceed $1,779,130 for the 2024 bond program. On a personal note, I, I have enjoyed working with TMP and getting to know them better. I appreciate the perspective that they have in our district and the history that they have in our district. And I, I look forward to continuing to work with them.
Mr. Siegler?
I move that the Board of Education hire and appoint TMP Architecture, Inc. to provide architectural services not to exceed $11,779,130 for the 2024 bond program.
Support.
Discussion. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Resolution, limited schools of choice. Dr. Lons?
Turn it over to Mr. Scaling.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. For many years, Wild Lake Consolidated Schools has been open to Section 105 Schools of Choice under the State School Aid Act. Under this section, a pupil may enroll from one Oakland County school district to another. The administration is requesting that the Board of Education approve Wild Lake Consolidated Schools as a participant in Section 105 Limited Schools of Choice for the 25, 26 school year, with a designation of school openings not to exceed 5% of the most recent October count in any individual school and not to exceed 10% of the most recent October count for the 25, 26 school year specific to kindergarten.
Mrs. Kaplan?
Mrs. Casa Grande?
I move that the Board of Education approve administration's recommendation that the district participate in Section 105 Limited Schools of Choice for the 2025, 2026 school year. And the school openings be designated by administration not to exceed 5% of the most recent October count in any individual school, with the exception of increasing the kindergarten openings not to exceed 10% of the most recent October count in any individual school.
Support.
Discussion.
Mrs. Kaplan?
Mrs. Casa Grande?
A question. Are there any schools that would be closed to school of choice for kindergarten? Or would they all be open? Do we know?
I can give you the, right now, the historical perspective. Is that we do have a few schools that close even at the 10%. Commerce is typically closed at some point, and Dublin would also be closed even at the 10%. All the rest of our schools historically have openings at the 10% level.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Smith?
Madam President, I just have a quick question. What is the total that we have currently for school of choice?
93.
Is that showing historically that we've been consistent? Or is it dipped down or gone up or?
Slightly down from last year, slightly up from two previous years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. West?
Regarding school of choice for staff members, do they have, do they take precedence as far as getting school of choice, which, which schools they want? And are they available to go to schools that may have it closed otherwise?
So staff members do have preference over non-staff school of choice. So when a staff member asks, it's not technically school of choice, but when they, our staff member do the employee relationship, they're allowed to bring their students to Wild Lake. If we have room, we can accommodate them at the school of their choice. But for example, as someone mentioned earlier today, if we had 35 students in a class at sixth grade, we wouldn't be able to put them in that particular building. It's more likely than not we have room.
Any other? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to resolution, Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB Board of Directors, Group Six nomination. The Michigan Association of School Boards Director, Board of Directors is comprised of 22 members, 16 directors elected from the eight regions, two elected from each, one director from each groups, five, six, and seven, and three at-large directors. Group and region directors are elected by active members, school boards, and each year several seats are up for election. Article eight, section seven of the MASB bylaws permit local school districts to nominate MASB Board of Directors candidates for open positions. The Wild Lake School Boards of Education will vote to nominate Mr. Mark Siegler as a candidate to represent the MASB Board of Directors, Group Six, school districts with a pupil membership of 11,001 to 40,000 for a three-year term. I'm going to give this one to Ms. West, sorry. She's new. She gets preferential treatment.
I move that the Board of Education approve the nomination of Mr. Mark Siegler to represent the Michigan Association of School Boards Director of Group Six and that the nomination be submitted by the January 8, 2025 deadline for consideration.
Support.
Any discussion?
Thank you for doing that, Mark. Appreciate it.
I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Siegler, for doing that. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Siegler. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to administrative commentary. Dr. Lons?
Thank you, Madam President. We'll jump around here today. We'll start with Mr. Hampka.
Good evening, everyone. I am excited to share with you that we are on full swing with the Teacher of the Year celebration and identifying our teachers of the year for the celebration in January. I am, I've had the opportunity to work the, with the Teacher of the Year Committee, and we were so impressed by all the nominations and the dedication, hard work, and passion that our teachers bring to the, our buildings every day. And I'm just looking forward to celebrating them in January.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Muir?
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Just want to highlight some of our work in special services with continuing to establish relationships with our parent community and also in supporting parent engagement. And part of that this year is that we worked with our PAC, our Parent Advisory Committee, to establish a four-part series where parents can come in and have opportunities to do conferences before the Parent Advisory Committee meetings. And then we would do a workshop for the last hour. And so that has been exciting. We've had two meetings thus far this school year, one in October, and then again in November. Our next one is going to be in January, where we'll do conferences to start off. And then there'll be some My Able planning and special needs planning opportunities, learning opportunities for parents. So we're really excited about continuing that partnership and increasing parent engagement and also providing some parent education and supports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Omer?
Thank you, Dr. Lons. First of all, I wanted to thank the Board for, in June, the Board at that time approved the purchase of Inform K-12, which is a workflow management system, for those of you, just as a reminder. But essentially that is, it's an electronic way to move the paper around the district in a more efficient way, so that that way we're utilizing less time. We're actually getting better information to be able to process those types of things. Inform K-12 was brought forth by a collaboration of our, several of our employees. It looked at different options and was recommended at that time, and the Board was kind enough to approve that. So I just wanted to update you a little bit in regards to what the progress has been made since the end of June, beginning of July. We've done some collaboration on some business office forms. We promised our leadership team that we'd try to start off slow, give them the most bang for their buck with some simple types of forms that would be easy for them to utilize and to get acclimated. We're, we're looking forward to moving forward with more complex types of procedures, including some things of collaborating with HR for onboarding, so that it makes it easier for not only our new employees, but our current employees in terms of making some changes. We've had some significant success with doing some extracurricular activities in terms of sending contracts out to employees, which has expedited things and also make sure that they get paid appropriately and have those contracts in place when the time comes. So essentially, we have about, probably about 10 processes that are complete and inactive currently, and about another 10 to 11 that are, we're working on, and then expecting a lot more to come in the future. So we're very excited about that and appreciate the support that the Board has provided for that process.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scaling?
Thank you, Dr. Lons. I have the privilege of working to help support Mr. Brian Swineheart, lead his athletic department. And I'd like to share a few highlights from our fall athletic teams and seasons that they've just wrapped up their competitions. First, all three of our schools were able to field and compete in our, the KLA Unified Soccer Program, playing six games for their season. That season culminated with a KLA tournament that was held on October 29 at the Legacy Center in Brighton. For Central, some highlights from their athletic teams. Their equestrian team made it to regionals. For boys soccer, we had five athletes make the Academic All-State. One soccer athlete was selected to the boys soccer All-State team. For our Central Football Team, 56% of the team was all LVC Conference academic. And our Tennis Team, we had one athlete from Central Tennis Team to make the All-State team. For Wild Lake Northern, we had three of our football athletes make the Academic All-State. Our equestrian team for Wild Lake Northern also made it to regionals, finishing fourth, which was one step short of qualifying for the, for the States. We had one athlete, a state qualifier for Boys, Boys Cross Country from Northern. And our Girls Swim and Dive, we had one diver qualify for regionals. Three athletes qualify for state and individual events. And the 200 freestyle team qualified for States as well. Girls Golf from Northern, we had one golfer make the Academic All-State team from that sport. Boys Tennis was LVC Champions. Our Volleyball was Academic Team All-State. An Individual Academic All-State had two athletes. Finally, from Western, our Volleyball Academic All-State had six athletes. We had a diver from the Swim and Dive Team qualify for States. The Boys Soccer Team was All-State Academic Team. Five of those athletes individually Academic All-State. And three individual All-State Honorable Mentioned Teams from the Boys Soccer Team. Football for Western was LVC champs, district champs. They were first-team Academic All-State. And they had eight athletes that were Individual Academic All-State as well. So congratulations to all of our fall athletes, coaches, and parents on successful seasons. And we wish our, our winter seasons good luck as they get underway. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Durkin?
Thank you, Dr. Lons. And to certainly follow some of the athletic accolades, it's been a very start, a very busy start to the school year, as everyone certainly knows that's still here with us tonight. And just as, with that being said, it's been an equally busy month in November and community relations getting ready for the next edition of Learning. That should be coming out later this month. Should be hidden in mailbox near you. The digital edition should be available as early as next week. But I just want to give a special shout-out to Pam Cole and Jason Lewis for all their hard work and really doing a great job summarizing the first third of the school year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durkin. Mrs. Kwansky?
Usually I'm first, so I'm kind of...
I know, I changed it up today.
You changed it up on me, yeah. So as one of our public comments highlighted on the 19th, we had some really excellent teacher-led professional development. So we had teachers teaching teachers, which is always a great way to provide support for our staff. We gave them a variety of options so that staff had the ability to be able to pick. It's sort of like that choose-your-own-adventure. Anytime you give people choice in their learning, it really is motivating and it really is more engaging for folks rather than a one-size-fits-all kind of approach. rather than a one-size-fits-all kind of approach. And so it was really great. I want to thank all of the teachers that, that volunteered to run sessions and host those learning sessions. The P D was, we got a lot of great feedback from our teachers that they absolutely loved that. At the secondary level, we had our secondary teams that started to take a look at A I. So I don't want to freak anybody out. I don't want to scare anybody. I know it's all very scary, as Mr. Siegler and I talked about at the last Oakland County School Board Dinner, where we had a keynote speaker that presented on artificial intelligence. So I do want the Board to know I will be sharing an update with some information, but we gave kind of just a cursory foundational knowledge-building understanding to secondary staff at that November nineteenth meeting. We'll be delving back into that. I'll be sharing with the Board some updates and things like that from some of the committee work. There is a statewide summit coming up in December that a number of people from that A I kind of ed tech committee will be attending with me and some members from Learning Services. So we'll be bringing a lot of that back. We know that it's something that we need to be out ahead of because that technology is moving way faster than anybody could even imagine. I know as Mr. Siegler and Dr. Lons, Mr. Skaling and I, Mr. Hampka was there as well. We heard the keynote speaker from Michigan Virtual, but I can tell you that there, even in the last two to three weeks, there's even newer technologies around A I that have come out. And it just blows your mind that, that things are, are moving at a light speed when it comes to some of that. So we're on top of that. We're definitely getting, getting work put around that so that we can communicate with, with all of you about how that's going. So we have that. And then really just highlighting, one of the things that I wanted to mention that went along with my data presentation is the coaching piece. We had a fantastic grade four, five session at Keith yesterday. We had fourth and fifth grade teachers inviting staff developers in to model writing instruction and small group instruction, which is that focus for really delving into some of that work with vocabulary and informational text. On this end, it was the writing side of it, which is reciprocal with reading, so I don't want anybody to think we're not paying attention to literacy because the writing pieces is equally as important. And just a wonderful learning opportunity. We had representatives from all of our elementary schools there, instructional specialists. I attended at the end of the, end of the session to really see how things were going, and rave reviews from staff, rave, rave reviews from our instructional team. Just really great learning going on, and I'm excited to see the work that's taking place. So I wanted to highlight that and thank the Keith staff and Debbie Faber, their instructional specialist, and Dr. Augustin for hosting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kwansky. And for me, since last we met, our team has had the opportunity to do some instructional visits. I am confident that that is the favorite day, whenever we have an opportunity to get into schools and hang out with, with our, with our kids. It's fantastic. We have dedicated, caring staff and happy kids, and it's, it just is a highlight. Well, other than probably our cabinet meeting, but we'll set that aside. Winter sports and our concert season is in full swing. So I know that Ms. Byer has put out to everyone, if you have opportunities to attend any of those, please feel free to do that. It's fantastic to see our students outside of the classroom as much as it is to see them in the classroom. And finally, Mrs. Casa Grande, it is, it has been my honor to work with you since I've been here in Wild Lake. I have found you to be kind, thoughtful, caring, supportive, direct, and, and I appreciate that. I have many more, but I'm confident some of other Board members will have some accolades for you. So it is, it is my pleasure to present you with this small token of great appreciation from not only our school community, the Board, our student staff, everyone, thank you for your service. It's, it's been our privilege.
Thank you.
Okay.
I will open while you go on.
Well, I'm going to start this way. So Mrs. Fernandez.
So I think I'm inspired to share a reflection at this time, not only for the diehards that are still here, for the cabinet, for, for Dr. Lons, for my fellow Board members. Discussion, there's nothing wrong with discussion at the table. And to be honest, that's precisely what inspired me to run for this position, is watching over a year and a half of no discussion and seven-zero votes, which didn't seem to be very reflective of the fact that there's a lot going on in the community. So, you know, I, I think that's important. I think it's healthy. In the end, we work and operate and support each other as a collective Board decision. And in case it's not clear to everyone out there, because the majority is where we go. And so we have a definitive answer, and it's fine to be able to have discussion at the table. It's healthy. It hasn't happened for years. And, and in the end, in case there are any doubts from anyone in the community, we do all work together and support the outcome of our, of our votes and our decisions as a Board. And so for anyone that watches this in replay or worries about the health or the safety of our working environment, like this is what it's supposed to be. We're supposed to have conversations, and it's not a bad thing. So thank you to everyone for sharing opinions and thoughts. It's a healthy process, in my opinion.
Mrs. West.
Well, I'm excited to be able to sit up here, so thank you to the community for voting me in. I appreciate those who have led before me and are guiding me through this new journey. So it's going to be interesting, so please bear with me as I go through this. I agree with Mrs. Fernandez regarding the healthy discussion as something that has also been important to me. I'd like to, I've enjoyed as an audience member prior to this, where I would see discussions, and I think it's beneficial for the community to really understand where each Board member's perspectives are coming from, to be able to appreciate them more. As far as upcoming events, I'm really looking forward to Northern's collage concert next week. I, it's always a phenomenal event. I believe it's already sold out, so I haven't checked out into Central or Western at this point due to scheduling, but I know that they always put on phenomenal performances, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm humbled again and so honored to work with fellow Board members and be back up in this seat. The last time I was here, there was, twelve years ago, I was through a different lens. I was a twenty-nine-year-old graduate in love, love of the school that provided for me, and here I am now, a father of two children in the district. So it's a, quite a, quite a new lens now to have a middle schooler and to have an elementary kid as well. And with that, I want to acknowledge the many teachers. Some of them, as I've been sitting up here, I've seen them go through retirements, which is, it's aging me even more, which I'm sure they feel is aging them. I want to acknowledge many teachers that I've had. I don't know how many people can actually remember all their elementary teachers, but I can. And so I want to say a thank you to Ms. Anderson, Mrs. Jones, Ms. Chapp, who's actually still teaching. Mrs. Love, Ms. Pence, Mr. Myers, Ms. Botke, Mr. Sudbury, Mr. McBride, Ms. George, Mr. Shulkins, Mr. Riley, Mrs. Lonteen, who saw something in me, Mr. Lewis, Mrs. Mazurik, Mr. Cousinot, Mrs. Goff, Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Froning, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Wolcock, Mr. Chapel, Mr. Darden, Mr. Heinz, Mr. DeLuca, Mr. Oh, Mrs. Rexroth, Mrs. Prattinger-Smith, and Ted Nathel. I don't know if anyone knew who they were at at Wild Lake Central, but they were a fun time there. They gave us some great memories. And even Ms. Karen, who was my bus driver for so many years, who had the route on Union Lake Road. I still would randomly see her at Kroger, and she would remember me. So it was, it was amazing to kind of see this, this life come full circle. These are all the many names of teachers, or so many other people as well, and helpers and role models that kind of made me who I am as being an alumni of this district. On a personal C H S family note, I want to recognize Mrs. Bond, who is actually on the agenda this evening for her retirement. I had the opportunity actually to join her class and speak about my twenty-year government public service experience this afternoon in my daughter's classroom, which was always fun for her. And really, I think to see, I, it was wonderful to, to hear. I provided about ten minutes of conversation for what they liked about the school district and what they saw as opportunities for growth and other things. And I'll present some of those wonderful ideas as I was the beacon to bring to Dr. Lons and to the fellow. But it was wonderful to hear seventh graders. Clearly, the first one, why don't we have a snow day today? I was like, it's Michigan, come on. But we'll get through this. We'll have plenty other opportunities. But it was a wonderful time to see what was going on in Design Tech. She's done an amazing thing. I walked into there and realized that was where I had woodshop all those years ago, and to see the same room. But now moving forward with modern technology and things that we're utilizing, which was amazing. And they had such amazing ideas for things. And that's what we need to focus on. You know, we make decisions up here, they're tough, but we always have to think about the students. And they're going to get through this. We have to work together. We have to be open now that our next, what we're charged with is how we're now going to communicate to the population, to all the families, to make sure that through this implementation, through all these changes that we go through, that we're communicating, being there, being present, being empathetic, and making sure that we're doing our job. And I also want to thank Dr. Lons for his responses to, I think I had about five pages of questions stemming from the facility studies. So thank you for answering those. Peggy, I want to thank you for your service. This is, I get a short time with you, but I was back from 2010 to 2013. You were a great, you know, a role model for, for my fresh eyes on this Board as, like I said, as a young, young man there. And to see you stick it out for sixteen years has, has been amazing. So I thank you for that. Got one meeting here. We were, back then, I look back at it, like I said, we were in that redistricting discussion, and here we are with, here we are twelve years later, so.
That's irony.
But here we are. And just to follow, it's a question, and I hopefully I can ask it. I just want to know where we are, because my Dublin family wants to know where we are with the Dublin principal search. Let's just love to communicate that out there. And I'm looking forward to Junior Lion King this weekend. I was trying to find where it was at. I just know it's happening. Can't remember where it's at, but my daughter wants to go. And to the C H S Choir Concert, which is going to be December eighteenth. I look forward to that. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Levin. Mr. Siegler.
First of all, I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy holiday season. Be safe, be wise, take care of everybody. Tonight was a very interesting night, and I'm glad we are through, over that, and we can move on to other things that will face us in the future. Lastly, to the young lady who's sitting to my right. And I had to write, I had to write this, this afternoon because I didn't think I would be able to do this tonight or just do anything impromptu. So excuse me while I read from my phone. Mrs. Casa Grande, Peggy. When we first met, you were a young mother of, of elementary school children. I remember sitting at a P T A meeting, thinking to myself, she would make a wonderful Board member, and even bringing it up to you. You politely laughed, and I believe you said to me, when the time was right, I might consider running. I remember thinking to myself, there is a very bright, articulate, charismatic, charismatic individual sitting there with a stunning mind, a very classic wit, who is not afraid to go out and tackle anything that was laid down in front of her. Whenever we needed the P T A to communicate with our representatives in Lansing and Washington, you were at the forefront of the legislative activities in our P T A and a beacon for the district. I sit here tonight wanting to thank you for everything that you have done for the community, our administration, our students, our cabinets, my fellow Board members who are and have left the table, and for me. Your warmth, your wisdom, your charm, your ability to communicate effectively and help us do what we do when we need to do it is unbelievable. It cannot be measured by any means. From the bottom of my heart and soul, I personally want to thank you for everything that you have done and wish you nothing but success in your free time, where you can now enjoy your husband more and family. And maybe you can cook him dinner so he doesn't have to cook it for you. And I want to thank you, thank your family who have so graciously allowed you to be with us for all of these years. And thank you for everything you have done and will continue to do. And I will miss you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let Mrs. Casa Grande have the last word, so I'll go next. Before I get to Mrs. Casa Grande, I just want to say thank you to the community that came out to the Lakes Area Taste of the Lakes. It was a fantastic event. Of course, Mr. Siegler walked away with way more baskets than most others that were in the room. So thank you for that. Lakes Area Youth Assistance appreciates all of your specifically contributions and the rest of the community. I want to echo and say that Wild Lake Western's play, Addams Family, was fantastic and phenomenal. So thank you, Wild Lake Western. That was fantastic. We're moving on to Central's play this weekend. We have all the collage concerts, and now we're into the holiday season, and it's really, you know, festive. And I encourage you all, as I always do, go get involved, go see what's going on in our community, go participate. I also want to thank, or congratulate, excuse me, the Wild Lake Marching Band. They were state champions this year. They went on to Nationals, and they came in thirtieth, I believe, was the number overall in the nation, which is a fantastic feat. It's a fantastic feat that they won the States. So congratulations. You guys keep rising for the Stars and go Band. Now I'm going to turn my attention to Mrs. Casa Grande, and I just want to say thank you so much for all your time, all your dedication, the community in Wild Lake, the students, the families. You have put them forefront in everything that you do and everything that you believe in. You sit here at this table, whether it's, you know, pleasant or not pleasant at times, but you're doing what you think is best for Wild Lake. And I appreciate you stepping up. I appreciate you holding the reins. I appreciate your guidance. For me, I appreciate your mentorship. You know, I don't know how I'm going to get by or get through without our phone calls and you telling me, we have to look at this, or let's talk about this, or have you thought about this? I'm going to definitely miss that. Ken? She's yours. Sorry that, you know, you're not sharing her with us anymore. But thank you for the time that you allowed her to be with us, and we will severely miss having your voice and your thoughts at our Board table. So thank you. And now, Mrs. Casa Grande, you can speak.
So I like to give gifts. This is for you.
Oh, no. I'm scared.
You can read it if you want, or you can keep it private. It's up to you.
The list of people who underestimated me and how that worked out for them.
Because usually when we talk, you know the answer. You know the answer. And I gave you a book. My husband wants to know how you're doing on it, so maybe later you can tell him how you're doing on the explanation of your book. But in case you wanted to make some notes, and then I figured this was appropriate for you.
Thank you very much. Things I got blamed for.
Yes.
I will not be taking that home.
No, it's, it's for here. It's, it's for, it's for here. It's for here.
Thank you, Mrs. Fernandez.
No, my first thank you is, is, is to my husband and my family because I would not be here doing this if it weren't for that. My younger kids, some of my younger boys, were in elementary school when I was elected to the Board. The reason I'm sitting up here today and not Mrs. Crafton is because I came in on a, you know, she's got a full term. I came in a, a partial term as well. So I actually de-seeded Mrs. Lyle for like a, a meeting. So this, you know, kind of happens. But she'll be back up here and, and doing a great job when she comes back up. Also, the teachers and the staff, the cabinet, everybody, I have learned so much here. And I remember one of the first things I said to Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Gutman, it's so, I understand the checks and balances in government, but here we are coming in, and you know so much more about education, and you're teaching us as we also are leading, you know, you and leading this district. So, I think I'll just leave it at that, other than when I ran the last time, I knew that would be my last time running. And, you know, but I have absolutely enjoyed what I've done. I, I believe in, you know, advocating for public education, and you know, sitting here, you all have a tough job to do, and sometimes it's a fun job, though. Don't forget that. I mean, we get to shake hands with graduates, we get to go to concerts and see all the wonderful things the students do. We get to see, you know, superintendents come and bring us, you know, ideas and, and help us through things. You know, it's been a pleasure, keep in touch, and, you know, if you can't remember something, as, you know, somebody said, I might remember it, you know, feel free to give a call, you know, and I have passed off most things. I don't have a whole basement or office full of things. If I do find anything sensitive, I'll bring it back to you. But thank you. It has been my honor and privilege to serve.
Well, thank you all. We are going to adjourn at 10:28, and go Lions, and if anybody knows the score, don't tell me, but go Lions.